So what really took over this is how...
I was going to do this, if you can suffer through the same meeting twice.
Like soda machines.
You got it, you got that, Mark?
We're in the five, so we'll think about that all for sure.
Okay, seven thirty. This is the meeting of the Citu Planning Board for September twentieth, two thousand and twelve. Look for a motion to accept the agenda.
Certainly.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Bob Vogel will not be here this evening. Prior commitment. First item on the agenda is a workshop, local issues and control of medical marijuana dispensaries. This agenda item came pretty much as a conversation between Joe Norton, board selection, and myself. As you know, on November sixth of last year, there was an overwhelming response to the marijuana article that was on the ballot, and it overwhelmingly was supported. And what we're now looking at now is, now that we've got the law, the question becomes is, how does Citu respond to that law? That is really the purpose and understanding of this meeting. Let me, Joe, you want to do comments?
Bill, thank you, and thank you for hosting this this evening. You know, I think that you stated the votes were taken, and the votes were counted, and we're left with the consequences now of how to cite this type of establishment, this type of business. And I think it's so important that we do get in front of the curve here and do everything we can to ensure the health and safety of the residents. Emily Gell of the Saks Coalition is here tonight with us, and her group is probably as knowledgeable about this issue as any group in town. So thank you for coming. And I'm just interested to see what the conversation goes and what we come up with. But if you'd better get, I do thank you all for being upfront on this and being ahead of the curve.
Yeah. Well, you're more than welcome. Wasn't sure when we set the thing up, in fact, Joe, and I thought about how many people would be actually attending. It's one of those things, you could, you'd be like a light and track a million people, or you could sit there and have a meeting. It's a cold rainy night, it was gonna be a cold rainy night.
Two nights before Christmas.
Two nights before.
She offing home wrapping.
As David just said, once it's cited, you won't be able to fit the ball in the high school gym.
Right.
You know, everyone's like, what happened? I didn't know about it.
I think the reality is, is that regardless, this is not going to be the first or the only meeting that's going to be on this subject. So I think what we're looking to do is make a determination of what needs to be done in the timeframe we've got, if anything, to be done in the Angel Town meeting. We're under a really short timeframe to go ahead and do that.
What is the date for the, is that February?
February, April.
April. April, so.
But the deadlines to get all the articles done, the public hearings, the advisory board, and everything else, puts you back up into, you know, probably the early January timeframe.
Did you reserve a spot on the...
We reserved two.
What, okay.
Okay, all right. Just make sure that we're all on the same page. We're really not going to talk about the law itself, or the legality, or why it was voted, or what it contains. What we're looking at is the implementation there on it. What we know for certain, and the uncertainties associated with that on it. Because it looks as though there are still, if you read the newspaper articles and that, the proliferation of everything all over the, on the web. It ends up some towns have opted not to do anything, some opted a complete ban, some have had a, and if then they have a ban, and if the ban fails, good evening, sir.
Aye.
And if the ban fails, then they have a cited bylaw, or cited bylaw on it. So. Jennifer?
Jennifer Sol, the Director of Public Health. As you might imagine, I've had a lot of experience with the Department of Public Health and them passing regulations. And I would definitely say that the Department of Health, when they come out with their regulations, I believe they will have to go to public hearing. And that is the time that we need to be heard and really scrutinize their stuff. Because we've often found, as health officers, some of us have better ideas or more experience on certain aspects of what they try to include in regulations. And that's the point that, you know, communities really need to be heard. Because those are the regulations that are key in this proposed law.
And the critical element are those things that would normally be outside of land use zoning. We're really, the zoning of our planning board would really be looking at land use zoning, and those citing the criteria associated with that. But would not necessarily be involved with the selection of the personnel and any qualifications, or more importantly, disqualifications they would have with the people that would be regulated by the plan.
I've done just a little preliminary research, and it was, a lot of it was shared to me through, it's actually Department of Public Health. Some groups, it's a community, they support other community-based coalitions, subs of use, male alcohol prevention type of groups, under age drinking type of things. And they had a meeting on December sixth, but I didn't find out about it until after. They shared some info, which I was happy to board, to the whole board, but it's entitled Medical Marijuana in Town Ordinances. And they just basically gathered research from other states, preliminary states out west, who tried to get in advance of...
Mass tax.
Mass tax, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's one I circulated around.
Oh, great. So they shared some info, and one of the ways to maybe address it through, I don't know if it's qualified in the land ordinance, is to just regulate it or restrict it to a medical building, a zone for medical business thing. And then you don't have to worry about all the other criteria. And you, and you do that as a, as a community zoning thing, as a locality. And then say, unless the state thing, when the state thing comes through in a hundred and twenty days or more, unless that's more restrictive, then we'll go with the state. And that's what a lot of municipalities have done.
They talked about making it more restrictive than, whatever is the more restrictive is the applicable.
Exactly. You can, you can write that into your town ordinance.
But as I say, it's been rather interesting reading some of the towns and their decisions for what, why, or why they've either gone for total ban, which in talking with the town council has some reservations as to whether that would be supported or not. And then they've talked about some of them that have put it in with a moratorium waiting, pending, I think, two major decision points. One is, as Jennifer just talked about, is the Department of Public Health decision, as well as the internal to mass legislature, there's movement going along looking for a six-month moratorium. They would come back up and extend it from January first to sometime in, you know, second half of the year. But there's no certainty or, you know, guaranteed path for that at all. So I think, at this point, I think what we need to be is as proactive as we can given the information that we have, and then look to caveat it with, you know, which, the more stringent, if you would, and that sort of thing on it. Do you have any comments?
I was just gonna say, I don't think, I spoke with some people, got some information from the state legislature. It doesn't sound like, I know the MMA has, he's proposed a stadium enactment for six months. Doesn't sound like that's gonna happen. But I believe nothing can really happen until the regulations promulgated by the State Department of Public Health. And they haven't till, we, May of next year, thirteen, to do that, so.
Till April.
I think it's middle of April.
Yeah, they have a hundred and twenty days from when it was passed.
Yeah, the thing they said, they said yes, what I got from them, they said before May of two thousand and thirteen. So we've got a little...
To be able to put it in, to have a town meeting and to come back and have orders of bylaw, would either have to be done, either with the annual coming up, a special somewhere between, you know, involved strictly for that, or would have to be a special meeting in the fall, a special town meeting. So I mean, you'd have to kind of coordinate that. And the timing, unfortunately, in April is not premium or optimum for Citu, because of the earlyness that we have our time meeting. From the superintendent of schools?
Well, you know, again, I mean, I'm just getting familiar with this law. Obviously, you know, our concern that we have about any, any kind of drugs being introduced to the community, we already have, you know, a somewhat of a drug issue here in the community that we're trying to deal with. You know, we have a community-based coalition that's already trying to address that. You know, so, so that's our concern. You know, marijuana, as we know, a lot of people look at it as a, as a drug that doesn't cause all that much harm. The fact of the matter is, for us, students who end up with drug issues, often marijuana is the gateway drug to that, so. We obviously have our concerns, I mean, the law is passed, the law is the law, but what it looks like, and again, getting familiar with it, the regulations are certainly there in place to control it. But, you know, again, that's, that would be our concern with school block.
One of the things that's been pretty common, or pretty prevalent, no matter where the legislation, whether it's California, Colorado, so forth, have been very restrictive in terms of places of public gathering, in terms of schools, playgrounds, churches.
And that was in here. That was, that was pretty clear, that it's restricted, that it cannot be used in public, public places, on school grounds, school buses, mentioned in here.
Because really what it does is, the law, in these ways of voting, is separate the medical use away from the illegal use in the Citu, and says... And what it really says is the fact that all the non-medical use restrictions, and all the regulations, and all the legal aspects of that remain unchanged with this, with this passage of this law.
Can I ask something?
Introduce yourself, tell me where you live.
My name is Valerio, I live on the, on the West End, Valerio Verona.
Where, where in the West End?
On Indian Inn.
Okay.
Mr. Monger said that, like, almost definitively, that it would be legal to zone out dispensaries or treatment centers, as they're called in question three.
No, it won't be.
It won't be legal to zone them out.
If it won't be legal to zone them out.
It won't be legal to, I'm an attorney, so I'm just curious, like, where the, you know, where the authority is that it won't be legal to zone them out, as long as there's an ability to have, you know, at least one per county. What the law says, like, max five, I mean, and at least, if possible, one per county, why can't...
I'm basing it on all the case law around adult uses, when all the, there's a lot of case law and adult uses of towns, you know, zoning that out, saying they're not allowed, and there's a lot of constitutional arguments and things like that. And those cases have all found against towns when they completely ban the use.
Isn't that a First Amendment issue, though, and then that old marijuana, does it really have a First Amendment?
I don't, I don't, I'm not an expert in the area, I just know that the cases where, you know, towns have tried to ban any use that's, you know, legal, those cases have all been overturned, and there's a long history of cases around adult uses in particular that find that you can't completely ban illegal use from a town. You can regulate it within reason, you have to provide some space for it to be in. From what I've read so far, I think it's, there's two towns that have implemented bans so far.
Wakefield is one.
And the Attorney General has yet to approve or disapprove of those, but from what I've read, it's likely they'll be disapproved because the state law has already made it legal to have these. So to have a town that's a division of the state, then ban it completely isn't going to comport with the state law. So, so my view of it, from what I've read and seen the analogies to how adult uses are done, and there's a couple law firms that have jumped in as well, that have put out, you know, model town ordinances and things like that to look at. And the ones I've seen, they're talking about, you know, reasonable, reasonable regulations, you can restrict those to area, after a special permit process, there's certain things you can do. You can say, you know, it has to be so far away from a residential zone or a school, similar to how adult uses are regulated. And those seem to be upheld very regularly, those types of laws. There's a different argument here that you could make, but I think it's riskier for a town, because you could get into litigation over it, that because it's still illegal at federal level, you could potentially draft an ordinance that says, you know, we allow them in our town so long as you comply with both state and federal law. And these don't comply with federal law. But, but, you know, it depends on how far out on the limb you want to go, based on most of the case law goes against towns just banning uses like that, so. But this is a little bit different than adult uses, because adult uses are not illegal federally. But that would be a much stronger type of position to take. And I think, I think the towns are in a really strong positions, like Bill said, have a backup plan. You know, they pass the ordinance, it's a ban, and if that gets overturned, then they've got a fallback, which is more like a special permit process or something like that.
Yeah, that's the Westboro approach, was it? Came back up in their, they had two articles going in front of their town meeting, or identified two articles. One is a ban, and then the second one sits there and says, to the extent the ban is not upheld, this is the criteria for citing. And all, all the restrictions and the permitting process would have to be fine, followed, and come back up and achieve your permit. There was also some question, variation in the total ban would be a moratorium, if you would, until a fixed point in time, let's say, May first or June first, that would allow, the Public Health Department, come back up and then resolve, identify all of the definitions that need to be in place, to be able to come back up and begin the permitting process. And that seems to be unlikely to be supported, too.
Well, that was the reason why we reserved two articles, for the, we talked about this before with that particular approach, potentially having one maybe be a ban and one be a backup. Yeah, we had to reserve space on the town warrant, what, two weeks ago? Due to the timing of the April meeting, we have to basically put forth what you want on the April ballot ahead of time. And so, as the planning board, we decided to reserve two different spots. One basically for a ban on medical marijuana dispensaries, and the other for regulations. And then, you know, between now, when we have to finalize, I guess we're gonna choose what path makes the most sense.
Would also have to have both of them passed at town meeting. You couldn't come back up and vote the ban and then not vote the citing bylaw, because then in effect it wouldn't exist. So you'd have to vote in favor of both of them.
It's good to call that way.
Jennifer?
Did you say the moratorium probably wouldn't pass?
If you put, if you banned it for a period of time, it's just, you know, there'd be, there'd be no, no applications for the Citu until May, May first, allowing for all the definitions through, through April. The thinking is that that may not be supported either by the turn of time.
Town council had a conversation with, with Bill and myself a couple of days ago, and he, I think maybe he just thinks moratoriums are very awkward to do, to do properly. So he really discouraged us from trying to do a moratorium. And he said, actually, on the, the reason why, that he had about why they couldn't be prohibited completely, although the jury's still out on that, he said it was actually to do with the Americans with Disabilities Act, that even though, you know, it's kind of convoluted, because that's a federal law, and, you know, federal law is ban marijuana anyway. But he said that that law could be used by people who don't have access to this, that feel like they need it for some kind of serious health condition that, you know, makes them into a disabled class of person.
And I think part of it, within this law that was approved, if there isn't a nonprofit dispensary within a reasonable, undefined reasonable proximity to your residence, it becomes a hardship for you to access your medicine, so you can grow it at home, and that's completely unregulated. So it's almost better to have a known dispensary.
As of January first, people can grow in their home, like, just this January.
Yeah, because the dispensary's already.
Yeah, because the dispensary's already, all you have to do is send in an application.
You can meet a letter from your doctor.
Yeah, a certification.
Is that, is that with a prescription, though?
It's, it's not a prescription, it's a lifetime.
It's a certification. That's not a lifetime, but it's a certification.
It lasts, I think it's valid for life.
Yeah, the law actually goes into effect January first. And parts of the, the medical dispensaries have to wait for the regulations, which have to be done by April under the law. But the other part's going to affect, and there's a, I was reading, there's a doctor group that's opened up in New York.
Cannonet.
Yeah, Cannonet. And they are already providing certifications to people in advance, so that people can have those ready to go on January first. And I think they're a Colorado-based group, and there's a law firm that's opened a branch here as well that's from Colorado. Yeah, that specializes in medical marijuana dispensaries. So, so it's, you know, from what I can tell from the law, I think that we have about a hundred and twenty days before we likely will see the dispensaries opening up. But first, the law do go into effect almost right away here in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, there could be, I mean, there could be ways to prohibit it, maybe by requiring electrical inspections, fire carpet inspections and whatnot, to keep people from growing, you know? Because, you know, obviously, putting up the big lights and all that would take some power, and, you know, that's something that happens in California, is that, I was an attorney in California before, I'm a parent recently with my kids, and that's something that, you know, electrical, people will rewire their homes to be able to grow. And then they won't pass an electrical inspection because they didn't apply for proper permits and whatnot, and right the other ways to...
Well, I think the question is still out, you know, do we want to prohibit it? That's what the point of the workshop is, you know, and what's reasonable. You know, the other thing they consider, too, is that it's most likely these dispensaries are not going to be looking to Citu. From what I've read, they're gonna go to the bigger population areas. I guess they're looking at Clement, Brockton, and Quincy and places like that, from a business standpoint, it makes more sense for that. So there's a strategy, one or two to think about. And if the town is really dead set against these, you could go for all out ban, and assume nobody's gonna want to come here anyway, or spend the money to challenge it when there's other locations. That's, that's one extreme approach. You may lose legally, but practically, that could be something to look at. And the other one is just put reasonable regulations in place, you know? And I think right now, I don't believe the town has adult use regulation doing. So I mean, that's another conversation, but that's something we should also consider when you ever have these uses that people don't want next to a school or somewhere like that. And we should have zoning for that as well, just so we're not caught off guard. But I'd give it as a similar conversation to that. I mean, I think the state's passed it, it's gonna be legal, so have you put some reasonable restrictions on it so we can, you know, regulate it and not be surprised, you know, by something, you know, opening up where we don't want it to be?
Well, as she mentioned about, I believe we have some zoning for medical, I mean, we have commercial.
We don't, it's all commercial, right?
Can you subdue the law?
Oh, we could, we could do it. One of the suggestions is to do an overlay district, like we have, you do an overlay district for medical marijuana dispensaries, and designate a section of town. That's what they do for adult uses, you take a section of town that's, you know, far away from residential and schools, and say, you could have them in this area right here, and then you layer some regulations on it, and that's it. But yeah, right now, there's no distinction between, you know, medical office and just business. So we've got the business districts in Humorock and Greenbush, not Citu, and Harbor. So, so if we did nothing right now, these could open in any of the business districts.
Right now, the only office medical that we have is Harbor Medical and Greenbush, I believe, right?
No, Jacobs Building, Jacobs Hatch, and the Driftway Building.
Yeah, that's all, they're within the same area, yeah.
But it's not in the defined area, they just...
It's in the commercial zoning.
The whole occasion.
Yeah.
The, I talked to the Cambridge Health Officer this week, and Cambridge has put a nine-month moratorium on it. Even though they've got a proposed article, there's just, there's too much for them to discuss. And, but if Cambridge can do it...
Well, it hasn't been challenged yet.
Yeah, true. How quickly would the...
The morasses of challenging, it may take nine months.
Yeah, how quickly would the Attorney General rule on the towns that have already passed ban?
They've got, what, ninety days?
Yeah.
They've got ninety days to rule on it. So they could rule in a week, and they could rule on it, take the full ninety days.
So that would...
I mean, historically, I think in the bylaw changes that we've made at town meetings, it's been pretty close to the full ninety days.
Yeah.
So I think they did it in November.
I think they know that everybody's watching this, so they might move it a little faster.
Yeah, so I mean, they probably filed it late November, to the extent that they filed it, because they would have, would have, the vote would be on the sixth, the vote had to be certified. Once it's certified, then they could come back up and go for the moratorium, so. Probably it'd have to be the end, end of November. So that would be December, January, February, before, before they would have to. Anybody else? Any comments? Let me ask, let me ask the question. One of the things that could be done is the possibility of having a dispensary as separated from the growth aspect of it. It doesn't necessarily have to be a dispensary and, with a, with a growth onsite component. And the question that I guess I'd ask is, what, what do you see is, or what, what would be your thinking in terms of separating those two if you provided a bylaw? Make sense?
I don't know if it's a loss, to be honest.
I'm not sure what effect it would really have.
What do you gain?
I don't know what the gain would be separating.
Well, I, I think it's a loss, I just, and at least in my mind, it's a loss, but I'm not, in other words...
It appears to be business.
And your point, if I don't have, within, within the immediate, you know, sphere of influence, if I don't have a source of, then in effect, everybody can grow their own.
Right.
Within question three, that doesn't differentiate between cultivation beyond the personal caregiver, cultivation and the dispensary, it's all in the same, same part of question three. Could we separate it? I mean, could we ban cultivation, but allow a dispensary, and still...
Probably unlikely, because I think the dispensary, the way it's defined talks, you know, they can grow it, sell it, do all those shows.
The treatment center, like, has everything.
I think it's unlikely we'd get separated out of state law, so I'm not sure what we'd gain from that, but... I mean, I like the idea of a moratorium, but I'm not sure that's gonna be legal, in part because the ballot question that passed has a specific timeline of regulations on it. Sometimes when laws are passed, they just say, defer regulation, you know, to Department of Health, but there's no specific timeline.
And the timeline is about the same as our timeline at town meeting, I mean, two weeks later.
Except we have to adhere to the definitions that they're providing in the same timeframe.
But it, but from a practical standpoint, you know, if a town like Cambridge puts a moratorium on it to get through the court system, it's challenged, it's gonna take much longer than nine months. So there's legal, and then there's practical, so. The effect of passing that could be that, yes, there is gonna be a moratorium until it gets through the court system, or...
Can we tax it? Can we have a Citu, like, an excise-type tax?
No, I mean, it would be taxed like any other commercial business that goes to the property tax base. So I mean, the state has to authorize for towns to tax anything, so. I mean, that's the economic argument I invited, that development commission, I don't think you might came, but I mean, you know, in some places, it can be a, you know, economic plus, you know, for certain areas. Not probably not a town like Citu, but you know, if you have a very large facility somewhere, and it's got a high value, then it adds to the property tax base.
But that's how many, you couldn't just get, like, a buck out of every, whatever quantity that was sold out, maybe somehow?
No, I mean, the state gets the sales tax, you know?
But how, but by a town, sometimes you'd have a municipal, like, hotel tax, and a municipal meal tax.
It has to be authorized by the state, so.
But do you think any municipalities will try that?
Well, they'd have to get it passed at the state legislature, yeah.
Be similar to meal tax.
So the food tax.
Like, the meal tax is different.
What's that?
It can vary from town to town.
Well, you, basically, the town has to adopt it.
Yeah, the state would have to authorize it, but that'd be something to take up with the state legislature to say, you know, we'd like to have the option to tax it if we allow it in our community. But right now, there wouldn't be that ability, it would just be treated like any other business.
And potentially, it could be a draw to bring people to the, a medical facility that would eat at restaurants and potentially shop at stores, but that's probably a long shot. I agree, it's a long shot. I'm just gonna say, as far as we go, to grow your own, you've got to show you're limited access.
Yeah, I'm sorry, can you say that again?
To grow your own, you've got to show either limited accessibility or financial hardship. I'm just wondering if when they draft these regulations, if it wouldn't be prudent to, some, how put an appeal process in there so that if your neighbor or somebody, something is gonna happen close by you or whatever, you have some objection to that, that you could go in and appeal the permit process or whatever, you know?
That you'd need through the state?
Yes.
Yeah, that would, unfortunate, or I guess fortunately, the state would be the one who would have to, you know, provide the law to do that.
But they, these regulations, they're gonna, to hold hearings, I'm assuming, before...
Yeah.
I think that's what Jennifer was pointing out, that, you know, there's a lot of stuff we can't address as a planning board, we can address the citing through zoning, if, you know, if we are gonna allow these in town, where would they go? And what types of, you know, physical limitations and location could we put on it? But the other stuff that's gonna be done at the state level, they'll have to hold public hearings. The Department of Public Health is in charge of this, so they're gonna have to hold public hearings with their proposed regulations. And that would be the time to, you know, give input into that whole process.
But no one's decided they want a regular, we're just proposing to put it in front of the town to see if the townspeople want to or not?
We're deciding, yeah, we're deciding whether or not to put something on the town meeting.
And you need to identify yourself.
Oh, sorry, Mike Westward, Amy's Way, Citu.
Yeah, it would have to be passed at town meeting, we'd be, we're looking at proposing a change to the zoning bylaw. And changes to the zoning bylaw have to be passed at the town meeting. So right now, we have to reserve spots on the warrant, so if we want to put something on there for April, town... something on there for the April town meeting weekend.
And there is always the option to do nothing. We're not saying that's a good option, but that is an option that's on the table.
And, and I know too that this ballot issue passed in Situate, something like sixty-one percent to thirty-nine percent, so I'm not, you know, not convinced that people really read the full text of the legislation.
There's very limited discussion.
What people saw was the summary of it, which is about a one sentence, but that's, you know, that text is actually much longer, and I think a lot of people probably assumed there were certain safeguards in place, but, that said, it may have passed by a similar margin statewide, so the question is, do people want to regulate this and what, you know, what do they want to do? And that's why we're holding this workshop.
Well, I, I think we should, if at all possible, and I think you're going in that direction, aim to the April town meeting for something. I wouldn't want to see a moratorium, a good idea, but all they do is, more or less kick the can down the road. I'd like to see if we are going to do something, and if we do, that we try to aim for that April town meeting and get something on the works as fast as we can, and that seems to be as fast as we can.
I agree, it seems like we do something for April town meeting, and then as this kind of shakes out, we can always, the next meeting after that, we can refine it if we need to, or change it, or, you know, learn from what other communities are doing. Everybody's scrambling right now to figure out what to do, and so, reading daily about what different towns and cities are doing.
Because initially, I think, and I think you made the comment that there are like thirty-five within the state, within the county and...
Five max per county, thirty-five for the city.
But one of the things that, in the emails that were sent around, and I think Stephen pointed it out, and I guess, he, he showed the location in, in Colorado. They're, they're one of the leaders, I guess, in terms of this legislation, but they're currently over, what, eight hundred?
Eight hundred.
They're currently over eight hundred locations in, in the state of Colorado right now. Thirty-five may be a foot in the door, but pretty soon, the elephants are...
Well, they just fully legalize that as well.
They just legalize it, yeah, and it's up to the DTH to, to expand it past thirty-five, so thirty-five is satisfying the need. You know, I mean, I mean, there is a need, but whether we want to shoulder it here in Situate is a different question.
None of the decisions will get made at the state DPH.
Yeah, the DPH will have to decide that.
But I, I think the point on Colorado was that they started in two thousand, just with medical marijuana, and they're up to eight hundred dispensaries statewide now.
And California started in nineteen ninety-six, and they're all over now there. Is there no way to push the town meeting or hold a special meeting or something? Because, I mean, I knew here, being, you know, a state body in Massachusetts, and on top of that, I can't imagine if they're really going to have anything firm until almost the last day, so they have a hundred and twenty days, I think, from January first, actually, when the law was in effect, so you really have till just about May first before you're going to expect anything from the DPH that's, that's solid. So, assuming it doesn't come before the town meeting, you know, it will drastically change what the town does as to what the DPH says. Is there no way to hold a special meeting or...
Well, you could hold a special company, that would just be a certain number of voters requesting it, and then we'd go to selectmen, and then, and then come back and establish a special company, so you could do that. But I think that what we're trying to do, and I think, is to work on a parallel path with what we're, the information that we're getting from the state, and get from public health, so forth, so that we can at least understand as well as feedbacking from the AG in terms of what did Westboro do, what did Deedham do, what did Reading do, in terms of their moratoriums, see how that worked out. I mean, so it's on a parallel path.
I was just going to say, I think the trouble with having a special town meeting just for this is that there's a certain amount of expense, you know, involved with holding a special town meeting, and not that that should be the only thing, but there are also a lot of timeframes and, and administrative kind of backup work that has to be done for it, so it would be kind of awkward to do it, but not that it couldn't be done, but it would be kind of a big project to do something like that.
You might not get it much sooner than April anyway.
It's not, it's not linear, the timeframe that you, it takes to come back, write the article, post the article, public hearings for the article, and that, and not necessarily linear, so if you, to add thirty days to town meeting doesn't necessarily add thirty days to each of the steps leading up to town meeting.
Okay.
So, like for April town meeting, I mean, we, like I said, two weeks ago, we had to basically know what we were going to put on the April town meeting, so there's, there's quite a process leading up to it. So, you could do it in theory, but I'd be surprised if you gain more than about a month, maybe even that, if you pushed a special meeting before the general one.
Well, no, I think push it out further.
Oh, we could, we could do it at the full town meeting or something, but...
Like after, after the DPH issues whatever they're going to say, you know, that would be the time to, to, you know, to, to work it out amongst ourselves, because then we know what the, what the sanction body of this, of the Commonwealth has said about it.
We could, but then the risk is then one opens up before then.
We're still, we still have sort of that exposure of it now.
Yeah, well...
People are growing on January first.
Yeah, I think, I think dispensaries, I believe, have to wait for the regulations, but everything else can hap, happen January first, but I think they have to be, I think it says they have to be licensed dispensaries.
Well, there isn't, they haven't even promulgated what the, what the fee is for the application, so that, so the dispensary can't even submit an application, they don't even know what the application fee is. They haven't said, what, a sixty-day supply of cannabis, so, so the dispensary can't sell any pop to somebody, because they don't even know how much they're allowed to sell. There's a bunch of stuff that they have to put out, you know, for the dispensary to go. But people are going to be growing for personal use, you know, in two weeks.
Yeah, I mean, I think in kind of Joe's comment, that, you know, it's better to pass something than nothing, we can always refine it as we go along, but I'd rather be in a position to have something, we certainly know what we can do in terms of zoning. I mean, you can treat this just like any other use, you know, whether it's a liquor store or a dog wash, you can determine where in town it's allowed to go and put reasonable restrictions on it, and you can certainly put it through a special permit process, which guarantees public hearings and opportunity to take public comment about it. You know, those laws are universally upheld, you can do it that way, so there's certain things we know we can do now, so, and, you know...
But I think that's the only thing that we have to do.
Well, that's one route, the other route is, the other route is to go the route of Wakefield or Cambridge and try, well, and, you know, and, you know, try to go pick a hard line, I'm not sure that's what people really want.
I mean, if you took a hard line, put a moratorium on it, by the time they sell that in the courts, the thirty-five could already be picked, you know what I mean? So, there's not any left to even come here, and then it's a backwards way of getting around it.
Well, that's the strategy, which is a point I think that some towns could take. They could just take that, say, you know, it's not likely to be upheld long-term, but to wind its way through the courts could take a couple of years. But I guess, you know, the Attorney General certification has to come first, so if it doesn't pass Attorney General certification, it won't go into effect at the town level, so that's what we really have to watch.
I think that's, that's one of the things, and I think the other thing is that if someone finds out that commercial property leases for less in Situate than, say, in, in Hingham, and we're at the end of Plymouth County, and you can have two of these in Plymouth County, you know, why wouldn't somebody maybe have one in North Situate or somewhere that's, you know, somewhat accessible? You probably don't need much in terms of sewer for it, it's just retail, people coming in and out and in and out, and, you know, maybe our licensing, maybe, you know, I don't know what the licensing fees might be, but maybe there are other fees that, that are less in Situate. I mean, you don't really know unless you've done a lot of analysis. Maybe land is cheaper in Situate, so all these other costs are, are less. I mean, you know, residential isn't, but commercial, you know, who knows? So, I mean, there's, you know, there's so many factors, so I think that's why what the Planning Board is trying to do is, is to be prepared.
Could we, could we reclassify different types of business zoning and create medical business zoning as a start? And then, then relegate it to just medical?
But I, I don't know if we have the same concerns over medical uses, though. I'm not sure we want to restrict those going anywhere. I mean, we can, we can strictly regulate medical dispensaries, we can create an overlay specifically just for that.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But then you have to pick the neighborhood.
You do.
Yeah.
And it would be Greenbush, because that's where the medical buildings are.
And so, we have to talk about, I mean, if, you know, you have to, if, if the law goes the same way as in the businesses, you have to provide a reasonable area in town somewhere, you know, it doesn't have to be all the business districts, it just has to give, I think the standard is like a reasonable opportunity for a business of that type to locate in your town, and there's a lot of case law on it out there, so you couldn't, you know, say you're only allowed to go on a single lot, it has to be, you know, a reasonable area that would, you know, give reasonable commercial opportunities. So, it probably would be something like you would pick a business district and say, they can only go in here, it's a special permit process, something along those lines. That type of thing would be upheld. We know we can do that.
I was just going to say, you know, it doesn't seem like a moratorium or a flat-out prohibition is going to fly, so, you know, but why don't we see if we can come to some agreement on a, some type of restrictive zoning by law that we can all, all live with? Probably the best we're going to be able to do.
Or we do the fallback, if we think we can do that model of, you know, moratorium, and if it's invalidated, then we fall back on the, I mean, I, I mean, I think everybody would like to have a little bit more time to go through this, if we had the option to have, you know, nine months or something, at least, to wait till the Department of Public Health regulations come out, we'd all like to buy a little bit more time to study it a little bit more. If we can get away with that, that would be great, to do the moratorium with a fallback. If it doesn't get certified by the Attorney General, then we go, you know, to the regulation in terms of area and special permit.
I was just going through this, this bylaw that you, that you forwarded to us.
The law, I don't, that is, Hill Law? Hill, H-I-L-A-W?
There's a, there's a law firm in Cambridge, Lanthe's Law Firm, that came out with a template for towns to look at that I circulated to everybody, and, you know, has suggestions of different ways to regulate the use, but suggests things like, you know, so many feet from, like we talked about from a school or from residential zone, special permit process, all the different options that are typically seen in zoning for anything. So, there, you know, there's, obviously, there's precedent for this in other states, Colorado, California, places like that, that we could look at to see what types of zoning they have in place and what's worked for them and what hasn't.
What do they recommend for a distance from schools?
They don't, they don't exactly recommend, they have options, but they have, I think, like a thousand feet.
Oh, yeah, they have a thousand feet.
All right, so just basically following the law.
Well, there, I don't think there's any restriction right now in the current law.
No.
I think that's something that they're putting.
I think the law says it shall not be located near, but whether it's a thousand feet or it's fifteen hundred feet, it's not been the...
There's no, nothing defined in terms of...
I mean, this was actually the, the example you gave, it actually had hours of operation, you know, how large the facility could be, I mean, it seemed pretty comprehensive.
There's a lot of things, like providing, you know, annual certifications, you give the license, and, you know, you notify the, you know, the town about who the workers are, and you restrict us to hours and location, they've got a special permit, they have, can't be within three hundred feet of a residential zone district, not within a thousand feet of a school or a childcare or a drug or alcohol rehabilitation facility or a correctional facility or any other medical marijuana facility, so it could create a cluster or something.
Yeah, it even talks about a quarter mile from a playground, public athletic field, recreation facilities, so it seems pretty comprehensive.
The other thing, when I went through this, though, it also has sign instructions for things like that, you know, no big flashing sign and notices that say, you know, this is only for people that have the, the card that has to be issued by the state that says, you know, you're certified by your doctor that you can go to this place, things like that, but the other one I was wondering about, I didn't have time to look into, is, does Situate right now have a, a smoking ban in public places?
I don't think so.
No, I don't know if that just goes along with the state regulation.
Okay, that's right, it's state law.
Municipal property, also state law regulation.
It's within businesses, right? That's the state law, right? Okay, so that would apply to marijuana as well.
I think that there's something in here on that I'm looking for.
You can't smoke it publicly at all.
Yeah, I think it was basically, no smoking outside on the property.
Yeah, no, that's for the dispensary, but I don't think town-wide that would apply, I don't think.
No, I think it's for the, I think that was actually, that was laid out as law.
It's private only.
No, it doesn't, are you guys looking at question three, or are you looking at ninety-four G?
Question three.
Ninety-four G is something that was bouncing around in the state legislature last year. Question three doesn't say no smoking anywhere in it.
No, I think there's something, yes, zoning...
What she was saying is this template that we were sending.
Section seventy.
No, no smoking or burning of marijuana or marijuana-related products shall be permitted on the premises of a medical marijuana sale.
That's the suggested one.
Yeah, this is like a template.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just...
I'm raising that as an issue too, about whether...
Section seventy.
Seventy. Yeah, but that, that doesn't, that doesn't ban it, it just says, it doesn't, it says...
It requires the...
Section seven said this is what the law doesn't do, but it doesn't prescribe things.
Well, could, could not the Planning Board set up a subcommittee, a couple of members
of the Planning Board and another three or four people, whatever, of interested people in this issue, to, to study it and go back to you with a suggested bylaw?
Yeah, I think, the answer is we could do that, I don't know if the timeframe allows us to do that.
I think we pretty much have to come up with at least a draft by what our next meeting.
What I would, I think, probably the tenth, right in here.
Yeah, maybe what we could do if we're not, you know, I don't know how far we're going to get tonight, I, I think this Hill law looks very, very good, there's a lot in here that we could probably use. If, if you wanted to, we could get everyone's email and just, you know, people want to stay in the room, we can just, you know...
Yeah, but I think what we'll end up, what we'll do is, we'll probably draft the straw man proposal and have that at our meeting, the January meeting, and that would be the language that would, we would look to finalize at that meeting and then go forward with the town meeting, so we would...
And perhaps we could promote that meeting to the public more aggressively than the government.
I think that's clearly, clearly the case, I think, and we're getting a sense of direction now, and as, once we've got that direction, then it, it tracks with what we built it time-wise, that we could come back up and do that. So, we'd basically have the equivalent of a public hearing slash workshop and have the language that would be there, and then we'd go through it, you know, verbatim, to come back up to make sure that, that addresses the concerns of the people that attend to be.
What's the actual deadline that we have to have the language to get that further in the...
We figured we kind of had to have the legal ad by the seventeenth of January, because we need the public hearing the first in February, because we want to get it to the advisory committee before the five in March, where they have to make their final recommendations and the law goes to print, you know, March fifteenth, I think.
Yeah.
So, it's a very tight timeframe.
Right. Well, I would think, I mean, between taking the examples we have, and I don't know if we get town council involved to help us draft it, that would probably make, make the most sense, or even engage, you know, an expert in this area, I know Hill Law Firm or someone like that, a couple of minutes, PJ has been speaking on this as well, but, you know, I think if we just decide which direction we want to go with the regulation, do we want to go with banning or a moratorium, or do we want to go with, do an overlay district in a certain area and, you know, do those types of restrictions and special permit process? I think that's what we have to decide probably tonight, which direction we want to go, and then we can draft something and, and meet the timeframe to get it on the spring town meeting.
Not to make it more complicated, but back in July, the state passed overwhelming prescription drug monitoring bill that includes goods American legislation, Narcan availability, and they're rolling out what has been up to date, an optional prescription drug database for pharmacists and doctors to use, so that for pill-seeking, opiate-seeking patients, we're getting legal drugs from doctors and billed by pharmacies as a means to track them. So, in Massachusetts, it's now becoming required, so doctors must use it as of July, and pharmacies are going to be strongly encouraged to use it. I think right now, we have maybe five percent of pharmacies statewide compliant. I think this is a great opportunity to, I know it's not a pharmacy, but it's a very loosely regulated dispensary right now, maybe from, as a town, we could be example-setting in requiring that these dispensaries utilize this free prescription monitoring database.
I'm not quite sure they're going to be able to, because there is a confidentiality I'm not quite sure they're going to be able to, is there, there is a confidentiality provision in the law that I saw?
Yeah, there is the balance thing.
But this one, well, I don't know, this one in particular, so, you know, the state's going to keep the list of whoever gets the cards and it's not going to be subject to, I think, to Freedom of Information Act or whatever, you're not going to be able to access it. So they did build some specific things into that, so it may not be that easy.
Okay.
I mean, it sounds like a good idea, but I think the law was drafted to address that, to keep a confidential, keep it a separate system.
The public health could do that, with ours only would be enabled to.
I would assume.
I think it's going to be in state law, it's going to trump whatever we would try to do at the level of that, so. But that, but that would be your chance to go to the Department of Public Health state hearings and talk about things like that, because they're the ones that are going to really be in charge of that aspect of it.
Now, is that similar to like when you go by SUDFED, you have to show your license?
It's more private, yeah, it's a way to track these, track bad doctors and flag park seeking addicts.
Maybe one of the things that we should talk about a little bit is, is if we are going to do like a straw man proposal in a state district, what area should be? And I heard, you know, a lot of ideas kicked around, what, what, you know, just as a planner, what would make sense to me would be to try for that commercial district. It is near Green Bush, people in Green Bush I know have felt like they've gotten kind of the brunt of a lot of negative types of uses, so that's something to be taken into account. But that's also the area that's been zoned for things like, you know, light manufacturing, all these sort of, you know, sort of unfriendly to residential type uses. You know, you can certainly have, you know, buff, yeah, I've been working on it for a long time on, on, you know, maybe better buffers to the residential zones, you know, it's, you know, another whole thing to look at. But as far as a location where you could actually have this, that people can access pretty easily and where it's not going to give like a flavor to the rest of the business district that maybe you don't want. You know, I don't know, it's just an idea.
Like, I think you, I think you would want it located somewhere that, you know, is close to like three A or something, I would assume, because if you're anticipating out of town traffic and things, it would make sense to have it in an area that's going to have less impact on the rest of the town. I know I can't remember, I read today, one of the towns on the North Shore adopted zoning or looking adopting zoning, just rolling it out on the highway that's right next to the town, I want to say it's Lynn or somewhere like that. That's how they're handling it. That's a consideration and, and some are doing it proximity to the police department, if there's any concerns there.
Right next to the high school.
Yeah.
It certainly seems like we have the medical use, even Green Bush, the medical buildings there, as was said, the Hatch Building, the Harbor Medical, the, the I, yeah, the Driftway I care place, they're all right there. It does seem like that would be the most logical place for some kind of overlay district.
How much space does somebody need for a grow operation if they want to grow it there?
Under a thousand square feet.
Under a thousand, okay.
Some of the things that I booked at, they talked like a total of like twenty-five hundred square feet, that would be the, the, the building itself as well as, as the growing area.
Tons of room.
So, I mean, that's the number that they're talking about.
Hi.
Can you introduce yourself and...
Uh, my name's Dave Simmer, I live here in Situate, over by Green Bush, actually. I moved from California about six years ago, I actually have firsthand knowledge on the medical industry that was going on out there, I was there when it started and know a lot of folks in the industry. And I think all very good points, I would say this, out of the hundreds of, of, of facilities I know of, the ones that never had any issues were the ones that were in other, in office buildings. And because you want, parking is an issue, you know, it takes all of seven minutes to go in and out, so you want to have enough parking spots. And folks would walk out with a brown sandwich lunch bag and in California, you actually have to staple the bag closed and you're not allowed to open it, you're not allowed to smoke in public, same thing here. And those folk, those places never had issues, the ones that were down by the beaches and in more of the fun areas, those are the ones that have problems. And so I would say you don't want one on Main Street, of course. Just something else to keep in mind is the folks coming in out of these people look like every one of us in here, you know, I just hope people pay attention to that. There's a reason why sixty-plus people voted for it and, and I think that's important. And, and with regard to the grow question, I would say that none of the growing is going to be done anywhere near these pharmacies, so.
It'll be shipped in.
They will all come from a distance, they're not going to grow in twenty-five hundred square feet, they're going to grow in twenty-five thousand square feet.
No way.
And, and then something else I think that you should consider is that, as you mentioned, folks are going to start growing in their houses if they can't, if they're not close to a facility. And there were communities, for instance, in Brentwood, I live near Brentwood, they put a moratorium up and what happened there was delivery services came in awfully quick. And I don't, and, and there was nothing on the book in California about delivery services and now they're all over, but they're really in more of the neighborhoods because there's no facilities close by. So, you know, happy to give my opinion, I mean, I mean, it, it sounds like everyone's kind of against it, it just seems like an interesting thing. That was my question as well, is what else is the town of Situate not banned, but really cornered, like adult entertainment, that type of thing, I would...
I think it's just unintended consequences, you know, if you don't address it, you know.
Yeah, oh, I agree, I agree.
Certainly, you know, that we're located right next to a school or right next to somebody's house, I mean, we can have reasonable buffer and things like that, so I think it's just, nobody wants to be surprised. I think, I think you're right on the growing facilities like in Colorado, I used to live in Colorado before this all came into effect, but I was reading about Colorado and the growing places are very huge facilities, it makes more economic sense to do it that way, so that's probably most, most likely how, how it would happen. But in terms of like out of town traffic, they're only allowing five per county and for some reason one located here, you anticipate, you know, some traffic from out of town, so you know, I would want to put it in the harbor or something, for example, but you know, Green Bush or North Citra close to three A would make more sense.
And the office buildings, I think, are, is, in California, that's where they all are and they're, they just, there's no signage. You know, there's a sign on the wall, you show your card, you walk in, seven minutes later, you walk out with your bag and there's a lot of people coming and going in those buildings anyway and people don't want to be stigmatized.
I think if they were like in a, you know, the medical buildings down in Green Bush, people wouldn't know the difference. And that's one of the things in the model ordinance talks about signage, you know, it's going to be very conspicuous, it's not flashy, you know, they're, you know, people, most people might wouldn't even notice that it was done in the right way. It's just, again, since it's brand new, you don't want to be surprised by not having anything on the books, I mean.
Well, and I don't think that we're necessarily, at least what I've heard, I don't think we're necessarily for or against it, either way. We're trying to be agnostic to some degree, I just think we want to be prepared as to answer it.
Agreed.
Well, it's state, it's state law now, so it's, you know, it is what it is. I think, to me, it seems like we should do some reasonable regulations like we do with, with anything that we don't think is compatible with residential uses or school uses, just that's what zoning is for. Make sure you put it in an area that's going to have the least adverse impact on people in town.
Under federal law, a hundred plants or more is a five-year minimum mandatory, a thousand plants or more is a ten-year minimum mandatory, it's a hundred kilos or a thousand kilos. So, a lot of, in the way you attract federal attention, I did a five thousand plant top case where my client's doing ten years right now because he was growing five thousand plants indoors. So the way you attract federal attention is by having these absurdly large grows. So I think President Obama and Eric Holder have said that people that are really trying to comply with medical marijuana statutes that go on in the various states are the ones that they're not going to prosecute. So if you're doing, you know, twenty-five thousand square foot grow, you're the one that the Attorney General is going to be going after. If you're doing a medical marijuana grow behind a storefront and dispensing to local patients, the Attorney General's not going to go after you. And so the people that I've spoken with in Massachusetts have like made pretty clear that they don't want to attract any federal attention. And, you know, I, I mean, I think this kind of comes down to like sort of a NIMBY thing, like not in my backyard, right? And that, everybody thinks that people who have cancer and are on, you know, whatever, need to have access to, to other, other forms of drugs, but we don't want to have the, the federal attention that comes to it. So, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's like you could just say, oh, it's only going to be these huge grows because you're going to wind up with a dispensary growing right, right there. I mean, that, that's like the, sort of the model that I think Massachusetts is actually trying to set up. And even in question three, it says it does not have to be a separate location or anything like that, so, you know, just, just to be careful about just thinking that it's not going to happen just like that if it will. I mean, and, you know, I don't know how, I don't know how to resolve it, but...
I tend not to be as concerned about the growing part though, I mean, it's, it's more the traffic and the generation and all that. But I mean, I think in a town like Situate, I mean, we haven't attracted, you know, really any real manufacturing based on our location and access to highways and things like that. So, you know, even if it were allowed, I think it's very unlikely that our facility would locate here, we're just not in position for that. Yeah, water and, so, but...
You need a water connection, that, that is not...
I mean, it's not very, you know, that's one of the challenges we have with economic development in town is that, you know, geographically, we're not well situated for certain types of businesses. But I'm not saying it couldn't happen, but I take your point, I mean, it's not like it's not going to, it's not like it's not going to happen here, it could, but certainly you have to contemplate, the facility could have all of the components that are allowed by the law. Grow it in the back, they can dispense it, they can have doctors there giving out the certificates, that's sort of what the council says.
It addresses the doctors giving out certificates a lot, it requires a bona fide doctor-patient relationship, so instead of setting up the doctor mills that exist in California where it's two minutes in and out. And I'm not sure how CanMed is going to deal with that because the bona fide issue requires some, you know, something, some states have dealt with it in the sense that you have to review the patient's complete medical history. Others deal with it as to what ailment they have, but they did try to resolve that in question three and not have doctors just hand out recs.
Whatever, that's a very difficult issue, I mean, I think most states, I've seen, have kind of given up on it because it's very difficult to regulate them. Places like Colorado and California, it's just, you know, if you're an M.D., you can write a, it's like writing a prescription. I, I think that's a big uphill battle, but that's something you talk about at the Department of Public Health and see if there's anything that can be done, certainly a lot of examples around the country, but you know, the way the law is written now, I read it, it is pretty loose on that topic.
They threw the word bona fide and whatever that is.
Yeah, but, you know, they, they did throw, when you talk about the, you have to have a debilitating medical condition, there's certain ones, but then it goes in other conditions that's determined and writing by the qualifying patient's physician, so it's wide open. You know, in places like Colorado and California, you have a backache, you get the certificate, you know, you slip and fall at work during court, so you get, you know, it's not difficult. So anticipate Massachusetts will probably wind up taking a similar course because we're not the first to do it. I, I guess this law they said is similar, I think what they have in Rhode Island and one other state, it's sort of modeled on a couple other state laws.
Yeah, Vermont.
Vermont, okay.
It doesn't require particularly the Massachusetts physician either, right?
No, it doesn't right now. No, they said, you know, right now you could have a, start January first, you could have an out-of-state doctor certified, you could start growing in your own home, January first, but I guess we're getting off point a little bit, I mean, we're the planning board, so what we can do, what we can do with zoning. So that's the question, what path do we want to take to get something on April 10th warrant in terms of zoning? You know, we go in the direction of, right, maybe now we would talk to the board members, build and kind of figure out, see what direction we want to take, but, you know, we can go towards total banning that, we can go towards moratorium, we can go towards a moratorium with a fallback, or we can just go for straight zoning, like we would, you know, adult use or a NIMBY type of use.
Question one, let's go, raise your, your thoughts.
Well, I think to be, based on what I know and what you've said about the moratorium and banning, that seems like it's not going to hold up legal muster. So I would be for trying to find an appropriate zoning, a location in a commercial district, just so that we have all of our ducks in a row, so to speak. I really don't think that it's going to be immediate in Situate, as we've said, but I think it's important to have something in place. So I guess that's where I'm kind of leaning toward, is some kind of overlay district, as you mentioned, Dan.
That's, that's where I'm leaning as well, I mean, I, I like the idea of, you know, the moratorium with a fallback, I just, I don't get a great feeling that the moratorium would be something, we might just be spinning our wheels doing that, but maybe we can ask town council that question and see what their opinion is.
They, they didn't like, you know...
Okay, they already said that, okay. I mean, I'd be surprised if that was upheld because it seems kind of counterintuitive that the state passes this ballot measure that says this is legal and then, you know, the Attorney General upholds that, oh, but the towns can opt out of it.
Well, and on the flip side, I mean, technically, if we put something in place as a special overlay zoning, right? It comes before town meeting in April, it passes, we have it on books, and then for some crazy thing, they say, oh, the towns can ban it. Well, we could put something on the, on the town. Now, there is always that window of opportunity that someone could come in, but again, you still have options.
I think town council didn't like the moratorium in particular, they, they didn't say that, that it was not going to work to prohibit it, it was just that moratoria in particular have kind of a lot of issues with them. And he didn't recommend, he recommended we not do that, he recommended either get prohibited or, you know, and/or you find a zoning for it.
Because there's no, you could come back and make sure that there was a date certain where you're going to have all your information, you're never going to have perfect information. So you may have more at that point in time, but not have enough, enough information that you think that you need to make the decision.
Yeah, yeah, but he just doesn't have more for you.
Yeah, I guess I'm with Richard then on that issue, and I think I'd be in favor of, you know, designating area, putting some reasonable restrictions on it, special permit, you know, at least requiring a special permit so that people can carry on so that...
Steve?
Well, I guess I'm a little surprised that the moratorium and the issue of the ban is one that we don't think would hold up, given that it's federally, you know, a controlled substance and illegal to use it. It's completely different set of circumstances than anything, you know, adult entertainment or any of those other kinds of uses, so.
He was negative on the moratorium, but not necessarily negative on the ban.
I think the difference, Steve, on that is that since we're a town, we're a division of the state, so whatever we pass has to pass the Attorney General. And the state's Attorney General, as far as I know, has upheld this as legal, this ballot that passed, so I think it's unlikely to be ever, even be able to get to the point of challenging it like in a federal court or something. Because for our laws to be enacted, it has to pass the Attorney General first.
Right, I, I would assume that that could be part of the case with the Attorney General is, you know, it's federally, it's, it's not a legal use. In any event, I mean, I, I actually kind of like the idea of setting up a moratorium first and then having a fallback with a, with a sort of overlay district, I think that works. And I think it works probably over the Green Bush area because of the other medical offices over there. But, you know, I just, it seems to me that we, we don't know much about what actually is going to come out of the Department of Public Health. And, you know, I feel like we would be better off having those regulations out there and being able to make sort of a form decision based on that.
You know, the one question I'm not, I don't know the answer to is this whole idea of a fallback position, I've not seen that done before, is that, can we check and see if that's actually kosher to do that? Can you pass something that says, you know, the Attorney General can strike this part of this script?
We did, and, you know, Bill...
That's my if, then, my, what I call my if then scenario.
He thought there was a way to do it.
And he thought, he said, he... The difficulty would be crafting the verbiage, but there would, it shouldn't be a problem coming up with that kind of, with that kind of a bylaw structure for town meeting.
That's what you said, what town was doing, was it Westboro or something?
Westboro.
Westboro? And, and if that is actually legal and there's like a precedent for towns in other contexts doing it that way.
Yeah, he said that we could craft something into the language that if one of them is rejected by the state as, you know, not being valid, that, you know, in that case, you know, such and such, he'll override or take its place or whatever. I'm not sure how the exact language to use.
But I guess my thought on that too, you know, even if the moratorium were valid, we're just sort of providing ourselves a little more time to look at it. You know, what are we gaining, we'll still be having the same conversation when the moratorium is up in the meantime, we have a little more time to talk about it and draft the regulations, but I'm not sure the extra time is really going to add a huge amount if we wind up going the direction of an overlay district. We can always refine it too, like we do from time to time, we pass something in April and then find the bylaw is not perfect, we could amend it at the fall town meeting and...
Yeah, I guess I was thinking more about, you know, the fact that we're making decisions essentially in the next two weeks that, that are going to get locked in stone and go to the, you know, to the population of Situate to vote on. And, you know, it's quite possible they could vote no as well. But it seems to me that gives everybody just a little more opportunity to really understand the nature of what this is. I mean, it's effective January first of this year and I suspect like everybody else, you know, a lot of people don't really understand what it is and what it will bring potentially. I mean, I, I, I guess I'll defer to town council if we can hear back from them, but, you know, absent something that, that doesn't allow us to sort of give us more time like the moratorium, I certainly think we ought to provide some kind of overlay district of some kind to manage this.
We'd still have to have our fallback position, they said we could do that, so we'd still have to do that anyway, but I hear what you're saying, just to buy us more time if we can refine that fallback regulation.
Well, you might be able to call it a ban with a timeframe.
An effective timeframe.
Well, and for me, the one thing about the moratorium, and I'm just saying, I honestly can't sit here tonight and say the community would be for prohibition or against prohibition, I don't have the pulse of the community. Like, like this gentleman said, you know, we're not necessarily against it or for it, I don't know really how Situate feels about it per se, because there hasn't been enough time really for a discussion. This is the first time it's been openly discussed. This is the first time it's been openly discussed.
I guess that's kind of my point, is that there's still probably a lot of learning that has to happen here. And that would give us some additional time to do that. Absent that, we'll sort of learn it all at town meeting, and we'll hear it all at town meeting.
I think there are a couple of stopping points along the way where you can, you can change language to a certain extent, although I think we need to have these ideas in language that's crafty to go into, you know, to be policy with the Town Law and to, you know, be like the need of what's in the legal ad. But once you get to the public hearing, you know, if you have two articles going forward, and one of them says a ban and one of them says it's a regulation, you get to the public hearing and everybody wants the ban, well then, you know, you go ahead with the ban. If people want it to be, say, fifteen hundred square feet from the school and say a thousand square feet, you can certainly make those changes. I mean, it's not like you're totally cast it still, but.
As long as you're within the core board. No, it's, I can make it less restrictive, but I can't make it more restrictive than what it actually had.
Yeah, you can't.
A little bit.
You can't, you can't introduce like a whole new subject matter, I think, because you have to kind of stay with the general topic. But we could, you know, since we reserve spot for two articles, if town council says we could do it, we could try the moratorium with the fallback, and then the other article would just be the fallback kind of freestanding, and then you get.
Yeah, then you.
But you need to actually be in the process of vote for both of them.
Yeah.
To be effective, you need a favorable vote for both of them. One would be moratorium. To the extent that the moratorium fails, then you need a positive vote on the restrictive application.
Right, and if we could craft that, since we have two spots though.
Yeah, no, I think so too.
But I think that's the question for town council, because it seems like an unusual way of doing that. I want to be convinced that that's actually worth our time, that there's precedent for doing that.
Well, we did that with cell towers, didn't we, back, you know, a long time ago? We, there was a moratorium and then there was also a regulation by law. And as things moved forward, it became clear that, you know, one of them was going to come together and.
Yeah, but in terms of having one thing saying, you know, we're going to pass the moratorium, and if it gets vetoed by the Attorney General, then the other one springs into effect. I'm not sure procedurally that works.
Yeah, I think the other, the other thing about the moratorium is you're buying yourself time, but you're also just kind of pushing off the tough decisions. And it is a tough issue, but, you know, I think it's going to happen at some point, so.
Yeah, I guess my point is not that, you know, I'm not trying to say we're pushing off a tough decision. I'm saying, you know, this thing got passed in November, and we're talking about, you know, locking down, you know, zoning by law changes by the middle of January without maybe the rest of the, you know, constituents being having a chance to really think about those really identified. I'm not suggesting that it's put off indefinitely only that we afford ourselves enough time so that people can really learn more about it.
There's also a good question is to having a restrictive, the potential of having a restrictive application process. How does that compare to a town that doesn't have any application process at all? So in the fact that having a restrictive application, if that was approved, in fact, that becomes a deterrent if that's what the intent is.
Yeah, and the model bylaw talks about that. You can have a provision that, you know, provides that the town is to hire a consultant that buys on it, and the fees are reimbursed by the applicant, and you could do reasonable things like that.
That's still a part of special permitting.
Yeah. Eric?
You know, I've been listening carefully to what's, what's been discussed here this evening. It seems to me that we need to be careful that we don't, we don't bundle up the moral issue of whether or not we should have medical marijuana with the landing issue that we've got. And I think we need to say, as far as this board goes, the only, the only moral part of this issue we'll deal with is whether or not it should be banned entirely from our town, whether that be banned temporarily or for some time. And then, other than that, then we need to focus on the reasonable restriction that we would apply. And I don't think, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel with that. I think a lot of that's already been determined and we can, you know, so I don't think there's, and where I'm going with this is the idea that I don't think it's, I don't think the idea of a moratorium is, is, it's, where I'm going to use this, it may be disingenuous, because, you know, this is a politically tough decision that just needs to be made at some point in time. So I like the idea of the, of the, of the ban on the ballot. I like the idea of the fallback. I like the idea of letting our trusted citizens make a decision and making sure that we have covered all the bases that need to be covered. Does that make sense?
I'm hearing red, I'm not hearing red or white or green.
I am, I am a, I am a.
Instead of, what I hear was, instead of a moratorium, you'd rather have like two articles, one being the ban and one being the proper zoning.
Exactly right, I'd rather have it up and down, let's get this over with.
I mean, I, I could live with that, I guess. I, I, I'm a little hesitant, I think, of coming back up and making a fully discreet decision based on what I know between what they, what they voted and what I anticipate to get approval by the public health. But I, I think you're right on. I'm not sure that a ban would, would stand up in my own mind. But I'd be willing to try the ban and, and come back up with control. But my instinct is to sit there and say, let's come back and see if I come back up and I manage it. And if the town decides that they don't want it, then they both know that, they both know that the special permitting process is down. And if the town recognizes the need for it or perceives the need for it, then they, they take the special process and they move it up.
Yeah, that is a task that's going to be very important to us and to whoever we enlist in this process. And that is, if I understand it correctly, it's very important that the town vote yes on both of those.
If there's two, then they didn't see voting.
So that's going to, we're going to have, give our responsibility to educate the electorate and make sure that, that everybody understands how important it is that we make this decision collectively in a unified way. Otherwise, we'll wind up with a debacle. Especially if the ban were to be enacted and the other one wasn't, and then we wound up with nothing if the AG's office said no on the ban. Quick question, so if you put one on as a ban and one on just to put it in a certain district, you have to vote yes for both of them? Why couldn't they just vote no, we don't want to ban it, but we will restrict it to a certain area? I guess I'm confused why.
They could actually do that.
Oh, they could do that.
Just not the other way around.
Right, okay, just, I got you, I got you.
So I think what we have on the table is either moratorium or zoning or ban. So we have to decide whether the second article is either a moratorium or a ban. Is that what I'm hearing correctly?
That's the way I hear it.
Well.
But you can't ban it.
Moratoriums.
How can you ban it?
Well, I think that's what we were saying, is you could potentially, you could put a ban, whether that was going to be upheld by the Attorney General or not, with that stipulation saying that if this comes back and says that the Attorney General says this is absolutely cannot be done or it's not constitutional, then the other would kick into place.
Let me ask you, Laura, is, have the bans already been voted in on these two communities that you talked about?
In Wayfield and Redding.
So by the time we got to town meeting, the Attorney General will have made a decision on these.
Yeah.
I mean, I just, the ban's, I can't imagine it's going to be upheld. I mean, I think if we went that route, we'd have to decide as a town that, you know, we want to fight this tooth and nail and we're willing to take it, you know, up to the federal level and all of that. I mean, I just don't see that as a practical position or one that would be supported by the town. So I kind of think we're wasting our time going down that path. Unless, unless people really feel that strongly that the town's willing to spend the money and legal fees to, you know, fight this tooth and nail and make this up, you would have to make it a federal case literally to go that way. So in my opinion, I think that's just a waste of time to even talk about a ban. You know, the moratorium, I mean, I appreciate wanting to have a little bit more time, but I also think that even if we went the moratorium with the fallback, we still have to design the fallback.
Yep.
So.
Design it up front.
Yeah, I would say that's a given, you've got to design it.
Yeah. And I'm not sure the moratorium's going to get us a lot further. I'd be more inclined just to say, let's, you know, let's go with the regulation route, get what we can done, but get what we can get done by April. And then as the regulations come out, we know more, if we need to amend it, let's amend it at the fall town meeting. You know, put a little more beat on it then and define it then and just go.
Or if they come back up and the state approves the moratorium.
You could have a special town meeting.
You can come back up IP your restrictive regulation.
If you wanted to, but, you know, the moratorium's just kind of kicking the can down the road too. So, you know, unless we're talking about going after a ban, you know, the moratorium, we still have the same issues, even if they allow moratoriums. So I kind of feel like we just should just jump in, do the best we can with the limited time we have, get something on the books in April. As we learn more, we can go into the fall town meeting and try to modify it. I mean, if we had held a fall town meeting, that would be more than enough time, I would think, to address everything we need to. And that's a, what, nine months out or something, so.
Why don't we make a motion to, where do we, the motion maker?
I'm not sure, I haven't formulated yet.
Well, Steve, Steve, do you still feel strongly about your moratorium with the fallback? I guess, maybe you should make the motion to see if that's supported or if we're just going to go the straight regulation route.
Well, I guess, let me add one more piece to this. These, the moratorium and/or the bans have all been passed in one community or another, as I hear, right? So.
A lot of communities have just adopted regulations too.
Right, no, but I'm just saying, on this, in this particular instance, they've been passed.
Yeah.
And so the Attorney General has to make a decision on these. And the Attorney General will have the opportunity to do that in the next hundred, twenty days or so. If we don't put a moratorium or a ban in our article, if the Attorney General decides that that's okay, we won't have given sort of the citizens the opportunity to make that same decision. But if the Attorney General decides that those aren't good, we'll know that before the town meeting. And I would assume we could pull that off the town meeting.
Yep.
So I'm just saying, it gives you, you have the opportunity to put a placeholder in there right now for an element like that, along with, and I agree that we should have some kind of, you know, specific special permit process, an overlay district of some kind laid out as well. I'm just trying to provide the maximum flexibility.
I guess I'm looking for a motion.
Well, the question comes down to whether we feel it's a moratorium or a ban. If I had that second placeholder, if that's really what mine, that's what's confusing about, if we're making a motion, what we feel, whether, which way or one or the other.
So you, so I hear what you're saying, you're saying still, we've got the two options. We put one that's the moratorium with the fallback and the other one with just strict the fallback. And like Eric said, we'd have to make it very clear at town meeting that you can't pass both of them. It's a pick one or the other.
We might end up having to just pull it off the table.
Or pull it off the table, yeah.
The Attorney General's already sort of fine on it.
Yeah, I think definitely please, when whoever makes the motion, be specific if you're turning a moratorium or a ban, or a moratorium and a ban, and a, you know, whatever.
I don't mind that approach, I'd be doing, you know, do two articles, one with a moratorium fallback and one with a, okay. Sure. You want to make this?
I feel like I'm pushing the piece of string.
Okay, I move that we go down the path of putting two articles on the Town Warrant, pursuing that path. One would just be strictly regulations, likely looking at an overlay district with a special permitting process and some other restrictions. The other town article would be to place a moratorium of, let's say, one year. One year on any medical marijuana dispensaries in town with a fallback built into that article that if the Attorney General does not approve the moratorium, then we fall back to the regulations.
Do I have a second motion?
Second motion.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed, unanimous. Questions, anybody? Boy, we don't want to next. Thank you for coming up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Holiday.
So just check our agenda. Come back up. Twenty-one's over.
Yeah.
I'll actually step in there and I'll, I'll get holiday.
So we should come, baby, on the next week to get to it.
That's great. I was going to go. But I wasn't.
I'm afraid I'm going to go if you are, but I'm worried. I grew up in Alabama.
Yeah, I'm a girl.
What about? Why, I was in San Antonio.
In Marina Studios, it's going to be back to California.
Interesting. Sorry, that was really.
I'm sure we find it. Find it, I should make your.
I think the whole thing, it works, it's clearly. That comes just the way that.
That's been the hard structure.
Doctors are not, you know, clinics are really just right for these types of people. And it's just accessible.
People drive out every two minutes and work for it correctly.
So it's not even valid for all the, the next one. So we'll, we'll, we'll increase the access. And we're going to do that. I thought, I wrote down some more, I said, wow, we're done.
Can't have prohibition.
Yeah, they got it off.
They got it, they got it. It's going to take hours to get it all. That's not.
If you're not buying things from other people, what about me?
I used to be a lawyer in the past. You know, I was doing jury trials and now I'm like.
Last weekend I spent, almost.
My wife's family lived in Hirschfield.
Napping, drinking.
My wife's family.
It's a great area.
Yeah. I'm not going back. To the west coast, and you have the. No, we have. More than ever, down in California. I don't know, west end. Yeah, we're all the way in the corner. Just before you get to go housing. Yeah, just before you get to the last. Yeah, well, it's going around, Angela's had that last. Yeah, or you're. A little bit cold. You're fine. Are you good? You're fine, you proved it, okay. Practice here is a little different. No, I'm not quite as strapped. I hope I find it. And people, people, one of my buddies told me, he was also a Californian.
Because it's like, no, you don't want people like, you know, with the kind of dad.
You don't have to be so argumentative. No. People are very cool, Joe. I did primarily, my insurance service related stuff, and I'm managing family law now.
Yeah, I've never taken.
Heart is kind of a lot.
I mean, really good.
Actually, I find.
Well, maybe I did it once and it just didn't do much, so I'm going to do it again. Well, I think it does help.
You just create order out of chaos. This is all for chaos.
Maybe it's psychological, I feel like. A lot of emotion there.
Yeah, we'll just hit double J in the big.
Anyway, I'm on the town website, I'm Eric Mercer. Send me your contact information.
So you know. Do you write?
In case I run across people with criminal issues and all, be happy. Yeah, well, I'm really not trying to like start.
That's not your, that's not going to auto count. Oh, okay. This really cute one.
Realizing. You know. I did work. It's hard, it's, it's hard to find a job after you have a long, bad old school.
This is very personal take on.
I know, I'm not like a year out of Harvard, you know. I did work for Big Frum in Boston for a while, and it was a year and a half, the landlord job, and it lasted about a year. And I found myself a little over thousands of dollars.
Okay, so I just, okay, it's hard here.
Yes. Got to come up with a bylaw, bylaw discussion, and then we're. Bylaws. I've read all questions.
It's very great. Yeah, well, SketchUp, a long story. There's software, there's software. It was brought by Google. Google recently sold the answer. So.
I just don't like to see us passing rules.
So that team.
I thought, yeah, up or down. People want a ban, if we're looking for that decision, I don't think we need to.
Well, it's.
It's a shame we can't find out what the. And I think they're hyped about it because it's going to be a huge point. They can't, they can't like, I mean, California is a big issue. Let's, let's say you tried to change the rule of voters, you know, in ninety-six, the voter passed, you know.
they ended up selling the house, and one of the conditions was.
Oh, and they had to have it lifted, right?
They had to have it removed, and the vehicle to do it was to actually go to the Board of Selectmen, because the planning board couldn't do it.
Yeah. And I think, you know, affordable housing is something we need to focus on more in town, I don't think this is the vehicle for it, it's not being used for this, I mean, we need to look at, you know, a larger scale project, using the housing trust, and the CDC money, and things like that, I think that's the way to get to this, I think the history of this has shown that this is not creating, you know, affordable dwellings for the house, for the town.
No argument from me.
So, so that was the first step.
So there's, just, just as a point of fact, there's really only been one that's ever been approved?
There were two, and one of them had it lifted, because it, you know, there were just too many issues with it.
That, that was the, the house where they came in, my neighbor.
He was transferred to Texas, and to sell his house, it ended up that the restriction of the accessory dwelling had to be, we wanted accessory dwelling, but he didn't want it as affordable, because he was, his mother or family member in it. So then he had, he came back to us to come back up, and we basically approved a new one, and then he had to go to the Board of Selectmen and have the old one lifted.
This has been around for a while.
So it's still an accessory dwelling, but the only change is that it went from being affordable to, to being a traditional accessory dwelling.
So, so then the next step, I, well, before I did any of this, I researched all the kind of towns around us, and a lot of the towns in the state, to see who had accessory dwelling bylaws, and what the differences were, and the two I went up focusing on really were Cohasset and Marshfield, that I think those were shared with everybody.
Yeah.
They had really, you know, more restrictions, and more definition on what an accessory dwelling is, and, you know, the one that we had recently, there were some kind of vague areas, it just puts a lot more detail on what the requirements are, I think it, it will help us as a board, and it will also help the applicants to know exactly what they can do, so, I went through that, and I incorporated provisions straight out of both Cohasset and Marshfield, there was also a Citizens Planning, Planning and Training Collaborative, has a model bylaw as well, and I looked at that as well. So, pretty much, almost all of the new language came from one of those three sources in here. The other thing that I, that I did as well, is that our accessory dwelling bylaw right now talks about accessory dwellings in business districts as well, in businesses, I didn't see any other bylaw that I looked at that had that provision in it. Our zoning bylaw, since we adopted the village overlay districts and the business district, allows mixed-use buildings, and there's a process to get mixed use in those buildings, and.
Which I'd include, like, an accessory dwelling?
Well, it's not technically accessory, it's just a mixed-use building, you have, you know, you can have retail office, residential, whatever you want, there's a special permit process for that in place already, so, I found it kind of duplicative of what was already in that. And the village overlay was adopted after this accessory dwelling stuff, so, so I took it out of there completely, I think if we wanted to add it back in, what we had is really adequate to address kind of all the possible abuses of it, because it was very kind of vague, and not a lot of language to it, so, I took that out of it as well. So we're really just talking about existing single-family homes, and what's allowed there. The, the one issue, we had a couple issues that we discussed before, about how do you, how do you make sure that the owner of the house is actually living at the house of accessory dwelling? Both from Marshfield and Cohasset addressed this, you know, with the affidavit thing that Eric, you were talking about, annual certification, they also provide that if the property is transferred or sold, the permit expires, and the new owner has to come back in front of the planning board to get a reissue permit for the accessory dwelling, and that's how you get the recertification at that time.
Does that have an impact on ability to transfer?
Well, the, the, there's two ways to do that, obviously, you do it that way, or you could, as, as a, as a building, a safety issue, or you have a restricted, restriction running with the ground as part of the deed. I, I like the way that Danny, Mr. Monger suggests.
And I did put in there, I added some language about allowing a prospective owner to come in before the transaction is closed, so that if they want to, you know, if I'm buying a house from somebody, and I see this is in here, I can come to the planning board and get approval before I close the transaction.
Right.
I did see that in another bylaw, but I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
I think it is, somebody may actually buy another house because they have an accessory dwelling.
Yeah, and then we would condition our approval on their, them actually closing their transaction, they would provide all the information we need, what level. The other, I think the issue that we'll probably spend most of the time talking about are the, the restrictions I put in on size, we talked about that, and one of the issues that I focus on are, you know, we're talking about pre-existing non-conforming lots, like in the San Hills neighborhood, they're five thousand square foot lots, like the one we got in front of us recently. One of the things that was, that came out of that meeting, and I think Steve Majorkland raised it actually, is that regardless of our issuing an accessory dwelling special permit for that property, they still have to go in front of the ZBA, because if you expand a pre-existing non-conforming use, you have to get, was a section six finding.
Section six.
So, the way it's handled in some other towns is they just prohibit it completely, if you're in a pre-existing non-conform, you can't do it, or it, or it has to be within the footprint of the existing structure, so if it was within the footprint of the existing structure, you wouldn't need a section six finding.
Yeah, so it couldn't go up.
Well, well, that's, that's.
Yeah, Bob had the, I think that's what he was advocating for, is that you could potentially have it be up above, like in an attic or in a second story.
Yeah, and the thing I, the thing I came to, looked about is, I, I like the idea of that, but I would rather have them get their section six finding first.
Yeah, well, we were talking about this a little bit in the office, and one of the things we were thinking, I mean, you could certainly put something like that in the bylaw, but we could also handle it through whatever application documents people get, that, you know, if you're in a non-conforming structure, and you're gonna increase the, you know, the, the size of the structure, then it will probably require a zoning relief, and you have to, you know, include that with your application.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to see, that they, they go to the ZBA first, because, you know, that should be their first step, if you're in a five thousand square foot lot and you want to add an addition on your house, you could get denied at the ZBA, and that doesn't matter what we do.
Yeah.
We can't permit them to do it if they don't have a section six finding.
You know, I was thinking, when we were talking, that it didn't matter, but now I'm
kind of rethinking this, maybe we should have something right in the zoning, because they have to get their section.
Yeah, I think it's gotta, I think it's gotta be done that way, otherwise they're just wasting their time, our time.
Yeah. So, the other piece that, maybe going through Rob's comments, because I think he highlighted some of the things that we might want to talk about more under that section E, I guess, on page two there, one of the things other towns do is they, to prevent people from taking advantage of this, like, let's say someone buys a vacant lot, and they go in and they build a ten thousand square foot house, and they can build a two thousand square foot second house on it, it requires that the, the house be in existence for a certain period of time, before they can be given an accessory dwelling permit, so that's section E, I've seen anywhere from five to ten years. I think the intent of the, the bylaw originally probably was for a lot of people that have like a financial hardship, or they've got a, a parent or something that wants to move in with them, those types of circumstances, it's not really intended to benefit a developer that wants to build a brand-new house, and then a second house, on a new lot, so, I put in.
But that's possible, that that could happen to somebody even a year after they built their house.
Not, not with this provision, so.
No, what I mean is, somebody could find themselves in a hardship, or they could want to take their parents on a year after.
Yes, they could.
So, they could want to hack, build an accessory dwelling.
Ten soon.
Two hundred and ten years, is, I guess.
Yeah, they could, so that's the, that's the question, I think, is that, you know, what's the period of time, you know, I took ten years in, but it's somewhat arbitrary, I took that from, I think Cohasset's is what they have, they have ten years in there, and Bob suggests five. I mean, what, what do you guys think about that provision?
I think even five is a lot.
For years, you had, you had the date nineteen ninety-two in the bylaw, that the
house had to be existing as of nineteen ninety-two, you had that up until about, I don't know, two thousand, early two thousands, so you had that long period there, and you still got, you know, plenty of applications, so it didn't really prohibit people, I think five years, you probably still get plenty of applications.
It's unlikely to come up, I mean, there's always gonna be that exception, but this is meant to prevent abuse, I think there's more opportunity to abuse.
Is there an option for, like, a hardship type of thing, where people could say, could come back and ask?
It's hard, because everybody.
It's hard to, everybody's gonna ask for.
Yeah, except if it was smaller.
But I mean, that would, that would precluded Garden Road from ever being approved.
Well, no, they could go.
Yeah, but some people would like that.
No, no, it wouldn't, I mean, that house has been there for more than ten years.
Yeah, the house has been there for a long time.
Well, it's certificate of occupancy, it's not ownership.
No, it's not ownership. You don't have to own it for ten years, the house has to be in existence for that long.
So, as, I couldn't build a new house, thinking that, oh, you know what, I'm just gonna build this house, and, and then, like, after a year or whatever, I want to change it now to a accessory dwelling.
Yeah, it doesn't say they have to own it for any period of time, it just has to be in existence.
Can I build a house, it comes back up, it has the accessory dwelling in it, and come in for the approval of the accessory dwelling?
Would, would you mean build a brand-new house?
Build a brand-new house.
No, you have to have, the house has to have been there for five years or ten years, and that's how Marshfield handles that, that's how most towns handle it, so it's not, we're, we're the only town, I actually saw they didn't have a time restriction on the houses, out of all the ones I looked at, because it's, it's a mechanism to prevent abuse by, so.
Right.
I mean, yes, there's always gonna be that rare, I mean, there's always the one in a million, but I think there's more opportunity for abuse if you don't have it.
I still don't think it's one in a million, I mean, that's just, I mean, I, I know houses that got built, that, you know, in-laws got sick, and they wanted to move them in, and they built an accessory dwelling there, so, but, you know, it's, I, I think you have
And that's how you get the recertification at that time.
Does that have an impact on ability to transfer?
Well, there's two ways to do that, obviously. You do it that way, or you could, as a building safety issue, or you have a restriction, restriction running with the ground as part of the deed. I like the way that Danny Mr. Monger suggests.
And I did put in there, I added some language about allowing a prospective owner to come in before the transaction is closed. So that if they want to, you know, if I'm buying a house from somebody and I see this is in here, I can come to the planning board, get approval before I close the transaction.
Right.
I did see that in another bylaw, but I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
I think it is, because somebody may actually buy another house because they have an accessory dwelling.
Yeah, and then we would condition our approval on their, them actually closing their transaction. They would provide all the information we need, whatever. The other, I think the issue that we'll probably spend most of the time talking about are the restrictions I put in on size. We talked about that. And one of the issues that I focus on are, you know, we're talking about pre-existing non-conforming lots, like in the San Hills neighborhood. They're 5,000 square foot lots, like the one we got in front of us recently. One of the things that was, that came out of that meeting, I think Steve Majorkland raised it actually, is that regardless of our issuing an accessory dwelling special permit for that property, they still have to go in front of the ZBA. Because if you expand a pre-existing non-conforming use, you have to get, was it section six finding?
Section six.
So, the way it's handled in some other towns is they just prohibit it completely. If you're in a pre-existing non-conform, you can't do it. Or it, or it has to be within the footprint of the existing structure. So, if it was within the footprint of the existing structure, you wouldn't need a section six finding.
It also couldn't go up.
Well, that's, that's for the session.
Yeah, Bob had the, I think that's what he was advocating for, is that you could potentially have it be up above, like in an attic or in a second story.
Yeah, and the thing I, the thing I came to, looked about is, I like the idea of that, but I would rather have them get their section six finding first.
Yeah, but we were talking about this a little bit in the office, and one of the things we were thinking, I mean, you could certainly put something like that in the bylaw, but we could also handle it through whatever application documents people get, that, you know, if you're in a non-conforming structure and you're going to increase the, you know, the size of the structure, then it will probably require zoning relief and you have to, you know, include that with your application.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to see, that they, they go to the ZBA first, because, you know, that should be their first step. If you're in a 5,000 square foot lot and you want to add an addition on your house, you could get denied at the ZBA and then it doesn't matter what we do.
Yeah.
We can't permit them to do it if they don't have a section six finding.
You know, I was thinking when we were talking that it didn't matter, but now I'm kind of rethinking this. Maybe we should have something right in the zoning, because they have to get their section.
Yeah, I think it's gotta, I think it's gotta be done that way. Otherwise, they're just wasting their time, our time.
So, the other piece that maybe going through Bob's comments, because I think he highlighted some of the things that we might want to talk about more under that section E, because on page two there, one of the things other towns do is they, to prevent people from taking advantage of this, like let's say someone buys a vacant lot and they go in and they build a 10,000 square foot house and they can build a 2,000 square foot second house on it. It requires that the house be in existence for a certain period of time before they can be given an accessory dwelling permit. So, that's section E. I've seen anywhere from five to 10 years. I think the intent of the bylaw originally probably was for a lot of people that have like a financial hardship or they've got a parent or something that wants to move in with them, those types of circumstances. It's not really intended to benefit a developer that wants to build a brand-new house and then a second house on a new lot. So, I put in.
But that's possible that that could happen to somebody even a year after they built their house.
Yeah.
Not, not with this provision, so.
No, what I mean is somebody could find themselves in a hardship or they could want to take their parents on a year after.
Yes, they could.
So, they could want to hack, build an accessory dwelling.
Ten seems awfully long.
Two hundred and ten years is, I guess.
Yeah, they could. That's the question, I think, is that, you know, what's the period of time? I took ten years in, but it's somewhat arbitrary. I took that from, I think Cohasset's is what they have. They have ten years in there, as Bob suggests, five. I mean, what, what do you guys think about that provision?
I think even five is a lot.
Yeah.
For years, you had, you had the date 1992 in the bylaw, that the house had to be existing as of 1992. You had that up until about, I don't know, 2000, early 2000s. So, you had that long period there, and you still got, you know, plenty of applications. So, it would really prohibit people. I think five years, you probably still get plenty of applications.
It's unlikely to come up. I mean, there's always going to be that exception, but this is meant to prevent abuse. I think there's more opportunity to abuse if it's.
Is there an option for like a hardship type of thing, where people could say, could come back and ask?
It's hard because everybody.
It's hard to everybody's going to ask for.
Yeah, except if it was smaller. But I mean, that would, that would preclude Garden Road from ever being approved.
Well, no, they could go.
Yeah, but some people would like that.
No, no, it wouldn't. I mean, that house has been there for more than ten years.
Yeah, it's been there for long enough.
Well, it's certificate of occupancy, it's not ownership.
No, it's not ownership.
Okay.
You don't have to own it for ten years. The house has to be in existence for that long.
So, as I couldn't build a new house, thinking that, oh, you know what, I'm just going to build this house. And, and then, like after a year or whatever, I want to change it now to a accessory dwelling.
Yeah, it doesn't say they have to own it for any period of time, it just has to be in existence.
Can I build a house? It comes back up, it has the accessory dwelling in it, and come in for the approval of accessory dwelling.
Would you mean build a brand-new house?
Build a brand-new house.
No. You have to have, the house has to have been there for five years or ten years. And that's how Marshfield handles it, that's how most towns handle it, so it's not. We're, we're the only town, I actually saw they didn't have a time restriction on the houses, out of all the ones I looked at. Because it's, it's a mechanism to prevent abuse by, so.
Right.
I mean, yes, there's always going to be that rare, I mean, there's always the one in a million, but I think there's more opportunity for abuse if you don't have it.
I still don't think it's one in a million. I mean, that's just, I mean, I, I know houses that got built that, you know, in-laws got sick and they wanted to move them in and they built an accessory dwelling there, so. But, you know, it's, I, I think you have to, I would say ten years is too much. But, you know, if there's sort of a happy ending, we can strike, to sort of balance those out.
Bob suggested five, I'm not opposed to five, I just think there should be some period of time, because I don't think people should build a new house and then immediately come in for an accessory dwelling. I don't think that's the intent of it.
But, the, the issue that was raised, let's say that I do want to have an accessory dwelling for my mother as an example, but I decided I'd like to build a new house with that in mind. I really can't do that.
You can just have her move in with it. You know, it's not, there's other alternatives.
No, but you can't, you can't separate sort of dwelling for them.
You could.
That's what I'm saying, is I could see like.
You could have her move in, you could wait five years and then you could put a separation law. It's not, it's very unlikely, I mean, the thing is.
That might be too long.
You can always, you can always come up with hypotheticals, of course, where it would create some kind of hardship. It's just very unlikely, and I think that the intent of the zoning bylaws to prevent abuse is what it's for. And, like I said, we're the only town that doesn't have this in it, of all the ones that we've got.
I guess I'm not convinced it's been abused.
Yeah, I'm more thinking that what we ought to make sure is that, you know, everybody in the town situated has sort of an equal opportunity to do this if they're in a situation where it's a hardship or whatever. You know, if it kind of falls into one of these purposes, if you will, so.
Most of the people that you've had coming in for these over the years, up until just recently, most of them, it was always people that had lived in the house for a long time. They had a family member who had some kind of health problem or other issue that they couldn't live on their own. And they wanted to adapt the house that they already owned. So, it wasn't often that people with someone with a health problem went out and bought a new house and they wanted the accessory dwelling. There were a couple of times people told us that, but I think, I think this Garden Road wasn't the only time. I think on that one, do you remember Bill on Willow Street, where that Tracy, who's he, what's his? Had her mother coming to live with her and they had moved back and forth, and they, they built an enormous house, which was completely legal, but it was a very large structure that was built and a very large accessory dwelling. And we didn't hear a lot from the neighborhood, but I think that was one that had a lot of potential to hear from. So, I mean, yeah, I think maybe the five years is, is not a bad thing.
I would just. I would vote for three.
I would, I would even take it down to three. I, I would have no problem with all of three. I think five is too much, ten is too much.
Well, three certainly avoids the circumstance where somebody builds a new house and wants to build, you know, just a new accessory dwelling.
Right, right.
It does, if you get that sort of limited case where somebody might want to build a new house with an accessory dwelling.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not opposed, at least in my own mind, I'm not opposed to somebody doing that.
I'm not either.
Yeah, I'm not either.
And I don't think most people care. I think the issue really is, as we dealt with Garden Road with that, it's just too, yeah, it's just too bad.
But, but what it does is, it, all the things that we're sitting, we, we talk about certain things that are very subjective, you know, where it's, how does it fit with the existing houses that have a common roof line and everything else? Here you've got a situation where it's an integral part of the design. You've built, you've designed this house and you've got a main structure and you've got an accessory structure within it. So, I mean, all the roofs are common and everything else are common. I, I don't have a problem with all of that.
So, is there consensus to make that three years, or I don't know what you mean?
I mean, I guess I still, I'm still against that idea, because it's sort of like you're zoning multifamily use and areas that are single-family use. If you're allowing people to come in and build something new with an accessory dwelling in it, then you should have just zoned the neighborhood for two-family homes.
No, no, because it, it still has to be.
It's gotta be permitted.
The owner still has to live in it, right?
Yeah, but it's still a two-family.
Right.
I mean, I think this bylaw isn't intended to give, you know, developers the ability to build two-family homes in single-family home neighborhoods. It's meant for existing houses in existing neighborhoods to say, I have a situation that came up and I need to.
It's meant for mothers-in-law.
Right, exactly. And that's why other towns have a, you know, the house needs to be in existence provision in it, because I don't want to rezone neighborhoods to be multifamily neighborhoods. I'm saying this is an existing neighborhood. If you happen to be an existing neighborhood, the houses have been there for a while, and I want to add an accessory on them. I mean, what's, that's why you require it to be in there.
I thought I heard some consensus about three years, is that?
Yeah, well, we got two, two different things.
You're wrong on that, or?
No.
That's what I heard.
You heard that, but we've got two things that we're talking about. One is the three years, the second is the ability to build a, a new structure that has an accessory component at construction.
Well, that, well, that would be doing away with the year thing, that would be the same thing. If you did away with the requirement that it's there for years, then you could do that.
An existing house, the three years would apply to come back up and put on an accessory addition, if you will.
Right.
But I think you should be able to initially come back out, build a house that has an accessory component, permit accessory component, and have it all done at the same time.
Well, that's, that would be doing away with the, the house has to be in existence for so many years restriction. So, to me, that effectively is taking a neighborhood and saying, we're now allowing two families in neighborhoods. And I'm against that. I don't think that's what the zoning is, the intent of this bylaw is to say, we're going to take whole neighborhoods and not allow two families there.
First of all, we haven't had that provision. Has that ever happened? You said that one time there was a planning house where they did.
Oh, oh, no, that's happened, that's happened multiple times. Yeah, it's happened multiple times. But I think, I think in general, towns in planning boards need to be careful about what's a single-family zone and what's, you know, some other zone. If you're really zoning for single, and I think those, those butters at 33 Garden Road brought that argument out very well, considering that, you know, they're not on a planning board or anything else. But I think their point was that they wanted it to be clear that that was a single-family zone and, you know, one house per lot, and, you know, that was, that was it. And as the houses became more equal in size, you know, the accessory in the main house, it became more of an issue. But it's still, especially when you allow them in a detached structure, I think it's, it's potentially an issue in any zoning just.
And one of the, one of the points of, you know, one of the purposes is to protect the integrity of neighborhoods. So, if you're going to say that I can go and build a brand-new house in a neighborhood that is a two-family, that, that's not the character of the neighborhood. That, I mean, that's not what, if we want to talk about that, we should talk about rezoning and allowing multifamily in these neighborhoods, because that was the effect of it.
I'm just trying not to preclude the, the individual who, suppose they had an existing house there and they're trying to accommodate their mother-in-law with it.
They can move.
And, but suppose they don't want to.
Well, that's tough. I mean, there's, there's a lot of reasons people have to move.
They can wait for three years or whatever.
Yeah, they can let their mother-in-law move in with them for three years, wait and get an accessory permit, or they can move.
Yeah, I mean, that's assuming they can live for three years.
Yeah. I see, I see, I see, it's a merit, merit.
If I look at my situation, if my mother-in-law were to come live with me, my house is inadequate to have an accessory dwelling under the condensate rule.
How long has your house been there?
My house is 54.
Yeah.
Okay. But it also, because of the lot and a lot of other things, precludes me from putting an addition on it. So, what, what I'd be forced to do is to come back up and go to another location, and then come back up and then have a house with an accessory dwelling. So, I'd either have to go to a house that's been in existence for three years, say, for example. I'd then have to come back up and put an addition on it so that I could have my accessory dwelling. The opportunity of coming back out and building a new house, that the accessory dwelling is fully integrated into that house, right, is gone. It's lost, I can't do it according to this bylaw.
Right.
And I don't think that's right.
Well, then we need to talk about rezoning areas that are going to allow two families.
But I think you're, you're taking the opportunity to build one house.
Right, because it's a two-family.
Building one house with an accessory dwelling, right, and immediately assume that all of a sudden, everything in that neighborhood is going to be two-family.
But it, but it wouldn't be allowed to be, that's the difference.
It's allowed to be now. The only difference is they wait.
That's why we're modifying the bylaw.
They wait three years and they all put additions on their house.
You put a regulator on this by saying you can only have so many in any given year.
Yeah, right. I mean, we've never had that in the year.
So, that does, that does sort of limit how fast all this might be adopted.
Could I ask a question as far as, so, under, let's assume this is in place right now, right? Let's assume that the statute is exactly how you've written it. And my mom decides that she wants to come, go to here, and I say, you know what, we'd like to, instead of staying in our house, we'd like to build a new house somewhere. So, what I could potentially do is design the accessory dwelling, have everything, but have like a door between it. So, like an open doorway. And then basically have the two units there, and in three years, wall up the doorway.
Yeah.
Potentially, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, you could.
That seems kind of weird, but.
Well, that's the reality of it, but it's a.
Another.
Now, confess, Richard.
I mean, if we should not try that, we should, we should just allow that to matter. I mean, I think the intent is, if you want to talk about allowing two families in neighborhoods, let's talk about that. Let's not do it a back doorway through the accessory dwelling thing. If that's what you're proposing, then I should allow two families in one-family neighborhoods. We need to add to the R1 zoning and allow that.
No, what I'm, or I'm coming down.
I'm not trying to get to that, I guess.
But that's what it is, though.
I'm trying to get to the point where, you know, people find themselves in circumstance, they have to take care of their aging parents or whatever.
Or, or they need to provide a place for their, their college-age kids coming in.
Two homeowners should have the equal right to be able to put accessory dwelling in their house. And if one of them is new, you've been, that, that right is precluded.
That's not, that's not the issue. The issue is, you know, do you want to allow two families? And I, I mean, you're talking about allowing developers to come in and build two-family houses in one-family neighborhoods. I'm against that.
I think.
If you want to zone a multifamily area in town, we can talk about that, but I, you know, I don't want to, I won't. That's owned in my neighborhood.
I don't see.
But it's already there.
It is right now, it's never changing it.
But even with this, it could still be there.
I don't see, I don't see a mother-in-law apartment being the same thing as a two-family.
They're just written through the law.
I mean, ultimately, you could ultimately get there.
You could, if you'd have, if the house would have to be there for three years, so you wouldn't have like developers going and doing whole neighborhoods of these things and things of that nature, you wouldn't have speculators doing it. It would have to be someone who actually, you know, the house would have to be in existence for a period of time. And yes, over time you could get there, but there'd be a regulator. But this is preventing basically zoning residential districts for two-family by doing it through the back doorway through accessory dwellings. And that is where we are at right now, and I'm against that.
We actually, I mean, not to beat a dead horse, but we had that 1992 provision that you couldn't do an accessory dwelling in a house that, that didn't exist as of 1992. And that was a lot stricter, and nobody ever complained about that.
So, that's, that's currently somewhere in here?
No, that used to be, and then in 2010.
This replaced it all, right?
Well, in 2010, there was a comprehensive rezoning and that was changed. And I think actually, it was Ann Burbine, wasn't it, 2005, built?
Yeah, took it out.
She took that out. One member of the planning board thought that any, she just believed in, you know, a lot of, you know, more freedom for a lot of different things. And she took that out in, I think it was 2005. So, that up until then, you had this 1992 date, and every single accessory dwelling was in a house that was in existence in, in 1992. So, so it, it wasn't a real problem to have it that way. And most of the towns that, that I looked at, because I did quite a bit of digging around too, to try to help Dan, most of the towns did have some, some timeframe. And I think having the three years is actually a lot, that's a lot more literal, having five years is more literal.
It's a lot less than any other town I've looked at, so.
Yeah.
But 10 is the norm in towns?
I, I think that they don't want developers to come in and speculate with it, which, you know, maybe is bad.
I appreciate that.
But you can't really regulate against developers. I mean, it has to be either for everybody or not for everybody. You know, the only other thing I was thinking is, if you go all through this, Dan, because you changed some of the square footage, that may also have some effect on how this plays out. And maybe this wouldn't be as appealing to, to a speculator.
I'm just saying, I don't, I don't want to have a bylaw that, you know, creates the illusion that this is helping people with hardships and accessory, everyone should be equal, when it's really zoning two-family, one-family neighborhoods. And I'm more concerned about that than I am that rare case that has some very unique circumstance where for whatever reason they can't let their mother-in-law move in with them for three years while they wait to get the permit or move somewhere else. I, I just don't think practically that's going to come up, where the other, we've already seen some bad unintended consequences of the law we have now. I'm more concerned about that and the preservation of the neighborhoods than I am about that rare circumstance.
But that doesn't change Garden Road.
No, we're done with Garden Road.
So, you're saying if, if the next house comes along in Garden Road.
That, other provisions do, though. We can talk about the other stuff, we need to get by that. There's other provisions that prevent Garden Road.
D would have prevented that right away, to 100 square feet.
There's multiple provisions that prevent Garden Road.
I haven't got to D yet.
Okay. So, I think.
Well, I would vote for three or five.
A three to five seems reasonable to me. All right, Steve, what do you think?
Yeah, I would, I would say, you know, keep it at three. Three to five, I'm okay with that.
Eric, what do you think?
I'm not happy about it, but okay, you know, like three years, that's. And, and the reason is, is because I've seen, you know, a fair number of, of people that are my colleagues, where they, they literally throw in and the, the grandparents sell their home and they build a new house with the idea that we're going to have an apartment for our, for our grandparents to live in so we can keep track of them. And the grandparents help fund the construction of the new house.
And Bob is actually adding a wrinkle, and he's saying, well, I guess that's the same thing. He's saying after the latest addition, because things can change, so. So, I guess we're, I mean, I proposed 10, Bob said five, you guys are at three, so.
Yeah, I think we might need to look at final occupancy permits, so.
I could live with three and we strike Bob's language.
Yeah, I could live with three, because again, my scenario that I mentioned, I could just build it in those rare circumstances and wait for three years and then build a wall.
Okay.
I still have to give it up over your house.
All right, all right, let's go on.
Just say.
You can always buy a double wall.
If you owned an old house and tore it down and built a new house, would you qualify?
No.
No, that's the thing. You know, I, I'm looking, I'm looking at my, at my particular situation where I, I'd like to build a garage, and I don't know if I'll be able to put an accessory dwelling over the top.
The next one on F.
Can we go back to D?
I guess we said.
How did we come back up to D?
I was just going to go over Bob's comments first and then go back over everything.
Okay.
Do you want to do it section by section?
No, 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 however you want.
Because I think Bob's going to hit a lot of the hot or button issues, probably. So, F, F deals with pre-existing non-conforming.
Yeah, that's not us.
So, I don't mind.
We talked about that before.
I don't mind this change. I, I think we'd add something that if they need a section six finding or others on relief, they need to provide that to us before they come to us.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
So, we're not wasting our time.
Yep.
So, I think Bob's language is okay, we'll add, you know, proof of others zoning relief first.
So, we don't even need Bob's language?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't hurt anything. I mean, if they give them a section six finding that says they can add another story on it, you know, I guess it's.
Yeah, but we're suggesting that be allowed, be instructed above.
Oh, you're right, you're right, yeah, we don't need Bob's language, you're right.
Because that's all.
We, yeah, we just need them to get us the zoning relief first before they ask us.
Right.
Okay.
And then.
Well, 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 I'm sorry, because it says, your language says it's not allowed to increase the total square footage. But yet he's, I think, suggesting that you could increase the square footage if you moved up. Don't, don't alter the footprint, but potentially like, like let's say I do have a house that has an attic, right? That, that the attic could potentially be a, an accessory dwelling.
Yeah, I'm going to modify that basically, I think, saying that if they get a section six finding, as long as it's within what's approved, they can do that. So, my language will get modified. So, so right now, if you're, if you've got a footprint that's, you know, that's your house and it's pre-existing non-conforming, you can't alter the footprint of that unless you go to the Zone Board of Appeals and get a section six finding that says.
Okay, I get that.
So, so once you get your section six finding, even if you did this with the, I'm going to modify the language that says your accessory dwelling has to be within, somewhere within that. So, could modify the square footage.
Okay, okay.
But you have to get the section six finding first, and it has to be within what's approved by them.
I think so.
But let's say.
Which it would be anyway legally. They don't have a choice anymore. So, like the Garden Road example, they can't build that off of our content. They have to get a section six finding now that says that addition doesn't substantially increase the non-conforming nature of the house and, and ultimately, they're not going to get that.
They're not pre-existing non-conforming.
Yes, they are.
Because they're five, that's three or 5,000 square feet.
One setback's not, of the existing house isn't what it should be.
So, so this is basically saying, instead of, instead of like prohibiting this on 5,000 square foot lots, which we could do, we're just saying that you have to get your others zoning relief to prove that you can build it before you come to us.
Maybe we can simplify that a little bit.
It'll be simplified, I hope.
Can I just, I'm sorry to interrupt this, but, so let's just use 33 Garden as an example.
Right.
And let's say I'm not changing the footprint one iota, but I'm building a second story, and that's going to be my accessory dwelling.
It's still, it's still needed.
Okay.
If you change the exterior at all on a non-conforming, you have to get a ZBA approval.
Okay, all right. Because I, I was just worried about it saying not increasing the square footage, but you're saying that you have that out there.
Okay. This language will get reworked, to basically say that, you know, if you get your section six finding, then you can have accessory within what they've approved.
Okay, all right, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, that way it kind of takes it out of our, because really, it's out of our jurisdiction.
Would have been better if Garden Road had done that first, you know.
Well, they're going to have to now, so.
Yeah, they got to go through that process.
Yeah. Let me see what else.
Okay, so the 20,000 square foot has to be, can't be in a separate structure if it's less than 20,000 square feet, is that right?
Yeah, okay, so, so H, so I made a distinction, if you look at G and H, I made a distinction here. So, I said that if you are on lots that are 20,000, basically, what is it, R2, R3, or 20,000 or later lots, is that what you're saying?
R1 or R2. R3 is the small lot.
Oh, it is, so R, so if you're in R1 or R2, you can have an accessory dwelling which is detached from the main house. If you're in R3, the small lots, it has to be attached unless there's a pre-existing structure. So, let's say like if you're over.
Pre-existing detached.
Yeah, yeah, so like, let's say you're over Garden Road, and you have, you know, it's a hundred-year-old house that has a garage, separate, you can have it in that garage, but you can't build a new detached structure on these small lots.
So if I got an eighty-year-old, fallen-down garage, does it count?
Yeah. Unless you don't want that. I was trying to make an allocation for, you know, if there's a, you know, if somebody's got a nice garage, and they wanna, it makes sense to put an accessory over the top of it, but we could just disallow it, to say it has to be attached. But I, but I'm trying to get to the point we got with, with Garden Road, where we all thought having it detached on that small of a lot just didn't make sense, and shouldn't really be allowed on these small lots.
But Garden Road had a garage already sitting there.
It had a garage. It's got a garage in the end.
In the back, yeah.
If it did, it could be within the same footprint of the detached structure.
So they could have built above it.
Yeah. Unless you don't wanna allow that, unless you just wanna say it's gotta be attached to the main structure. Either way, Garden Road's unique because it's legal non-conforming, this is for conforming lots too.
I, I think it's nice, because it allows some flexibility if there isn't an existing detached structure.
That's what I was thinking, if you see these old houses that have like a nice, you know, not a falling-down garage, a nice garage that already has an attic space above it, it makes sense just to turn that into an accessory. I didn't wanna disallow that from happening.
Well, if you're good at tearing it down and putting a whole new structure.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
It's reasonable.
But, but they can, they can backdoor it through getting a Section Six finding, you know, and, you know, we're not, we're not getting into that conversation, that's up to the ZVA to decide whether it substantially increases the non-conformity or not.
But the way this trees down, if I've got a house with a little garage, like I've got a small garage, it has a garage. Then I could tear down my garage, I could build a suitable garage, and then put it in an accessory dwelling above it.
Not for ten years?
No.
Not for ten years?
Not for three years.
Yeah, well, three years, whatever you decide.
Well, make it three, right?
Yeah, if you wanna make that three years, that's okay.
Start going today.
Can I get ten years on that?
That would be my house.
All right, so three years on that.
I quit while you're ahead with three, I'd be honest.
Okay, so there's that one, let me see what else Bob's got. We're going to J, well, go to J, oh, this is the curb cut, I saw this in Cohasset too. Yeah, this is a, this is the whole driveway issue, which is, most of the towns I looked at require accessory dwellings to share the same driveway.
Uh-huh.
They don't want you to, you know, create a second driveway that really looks like a, looks like a duplex.
Yeah.
So that's what this is intended to do, and then I added some additional language that also tries to get around the issue of somebody then just building like, you know, a new driveway, and then coming to see us afterwards, you know, building a big circular driveway that would serve two sites, you know?
Yeah.
It's the same kind of thing, the driveway also needs to be in existence for a certain period of time.
That's gonna be hard to police.
It is gonna be hard to police, but the neighbors are gonna know. I mean, the neighbors for Garden Road, they, I mean, they have photographs.
What you're gonna do is, if you're single driveway, you've got three cars, because one is gonna be parked in the street all the time. You've got a real enforcement issue. Nobody's gonna park three cars in a driveway.
Well, no, they can widen the driveway, they can...
Put a little pull-off.
They can do things like that.
Yeah, the reality is, they're gonna park, they're gonna park in the street.
But the idea of having two driveways, I think, goes against the idea of an accessory dwelling, to have it, I mean, it's like allowing duplexes. I mean, I think this was intended to be the mother-in-law living over the garage, or, you know, living off the back part of the house, this is not intended to create duplexes with two separate driveways.
Yeah, I think the, the two driveways makes it more like two, two units there, and I think the whole idea was to try to merge it.
And again, this is what, this is what most towns have, this is not my...
Just say a single, just say a single curb cut.
Yeah, a single curb cut, yeah.
And just leave the rest of this.
Yeah.
Yeah, but then what if you had, you know, you just split it up, and one curb cut, and just splits into two driveways, like, you know, I think it, I think there's so many ways around it, without requiring it to be in existence for a period of time. Again, it's like the, you had the...
But how you do it, you've still got a single curb cut.
Right, but I'm less concerned about the curb cut, I'm more concerned about the appearance of a duplex.
When you, when you make it a single rather than two curb cuts, then you, you've eliminated that.
Well, here, let me show you. You've got a lot like this, you've got, you know, let's say a big lots, you've got that, you've got a single curb cut like this, I don't want, I don't want this, single curb cut, two driveways. So it, I'm trying to prevent people from having the appearance of two houses on one lot. I mean, I think this is supposed to be accessory, it's supposed to be subordinate.
So I have down like the beach where I've got three parking spaces to park about.
Yeah, they could, they can make the driveway longer, they can bring it in the back, they can put parking in the back, there's all kinds of things you can do to solve that problem, but, I, I, again, I don't think that the point of this is to allow two houses on a single lot towards a single-family neighborhood. I think the point, point of it is to allow these hardship situations with, you know, the mother-in-law moving in, things like that, I don't, you know, if we wanna zone neighborhoods for two single-family houses, let's talk about that. Let's not backdoor it through the accessory dwelling, if you guys are in favor of allowing two houses in all our residential districts, let's just do it then. But that's, without provisions like this, that's what you're doing, and I'm against that. And again, this is language, I mean, this is not my language, this is language from other towns around us.
So what do you think about what Bob has said there, about allowing the alteration of the existing driveway? That's what you're, you're kind of advocating against in some cases?
No, if it's a single driveway, that's fine. I think that's what he's saying. I am not trying to restrict the driveway, I'm trying to restrict the construction of two driveways.
He's just defining it means to how it can be used.
Yeah, I mean, if you want a widened existing driveway to accommodate parking spaces, that's fine, I mean, I'm agreeing with you.
I think what Bob's saying is more that he could, he could actually modify, relocate the curb cut, relocate the driveway, such that it may, a single driveway may access to both dwellings easier.
That's fine, I'm not against relocating the curb cut or relocating the...
I think that's kind of what he's getting at.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with his concept there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think the way you're saying is that there should be no, there should be only a single curb cut, what he's saying is that the single curb cut could be altered or moved.
Right, and that's fine.
I would strike, maybe this is what you're saying, is where it says new driveway, I would just say no new curb cut shall be created to service the accessory dwelling.
That's kind of nice and correct.
But, well, Bob's saying, well, you could relocate, you could have a new curb cut, you'd have to close up the old one.
So rather than saying new, would say no additional?
So, so basically, we're saying just one curb cut.
One curb cut, yeah.
Okay, single curb cut.
Just single curb cuts.
Okay.
In single driveway.
I'm not sure about the single driveway, oh, because I, I can just see situations on a huge lot where, I don't know, there's a barn, downway beyond, or you, like, you've got it split off, we, we allowed it to have two separate structures, in some cases, where you have a really large lot. And you might need to have access where there is a new driveway down to that location. In fact, I'll think something, I'm trying to remember, there was one that had a pretty large lot, with the accessory dwelling was off to the side.
No, actually, the accessory dwelling, the first house, right, the one we just saw, and then they built a brand-new house behind it. Remember that?
Um, yeah, that one that you just saw was, well, actually, that one is on the common driveway, so that one, it won't be a problem.
Well, I, I...
But I think there was one on Manlot Road, where they were taking the big accessory dwelling off to the side, I just had to create a separate driveway.
Yeah, I mean, I understand your intent, I just think we might be getting ourselves a little bit too restrictive with that no new driveway.
Yeah, but I think you can rework the, I think we're in agreement that we can live with a single curb cut.
Okay, K is, let's see what he said, how do you distinguish a test structure, I mean, sometimes it's obvious, governor's not sure. Okay, this is the size one, so this is the one we should probably talk about the most.
That was Cohasset, it was nine hundred, I saw, should, should that be seven fifty?
Well, I, I increased it because we're going with, remember, we talked about going with the lesser of concept now versus the greater of?
Mm-hmm.
So, the other thing that's in here as well, is that it restricts the, you have to have a house of a certain size in order to qualify for an accessory. So, you know, let's say you had an eight hundred square foot house, that wouldn't allow you to build a nine hundred square foot accessory dwelling, you have to...
Twelve hundred, I like that.
Twelve hundred.
That was D, I like that.
And I used to live in an area that, you know, a lot of the houses are about that size, about twelve hundred or thirteen hundred, but...
So this is saying maximum size an accessory dwelling could ever be is nine hundred square feet?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes, it's, it's the lesser of twenty-five percent of the house or nine hundred square feet.
So for instance, if you had a six thousand square foot house?
You'd get nine hundred.
You'd still get nine hundred.
Yep. And most towns I looked at, they have a maximum, because again, they're, it's not intended to allow like duplexes, it's supposed to be an accessory dwelling, like a two-bedroom, you know, for your in-laws to move into.
So if I had a twelve hundred square foot house, I'd get twenty-five percent of the twelve hundred, so I'd have a fifteen hundred square foot house.
Total.
If I had a twelve hundred square foot house, which is the minimum, right?
Right, yeah. You'd have to have twelve...
Right now, I could get...
You'd have a three hundred square foot studio.
Get a three hundred square foot, so that I go from twelve to fifteen hundred square feet.
Yep.
Right.
So they had a ten by thirty, no, ten by thirty.
It's like a one-bedroom with a, one bathroom.
Ten by thirty.
Ten by thirty, right. Be hard to squeeze a bathroom, kitchen, and bedroom in there.
It's like a condo.
A small condo.
It'd be impossible to squeeze all that in there.
Like a small condo, be a studio or a one-bedroom.
You have an outside shower.
I mean, I lived in this, I lived in an attached one, a house I was in college, that was, I think, two hundred square feet, and it was basically like a studio with a bathroom.
I was just at the, it was called Bill Boston, now it's called ABX Conference about a month ago, and they're marketing the Seaport District, they're calling them micro-units, but they're exactly three hundred square feet. And we, they had a mock-up that you walked through at the show, and it was, you know, definitely small, but decent.
I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna accommodate the people that really have a hardship situation, but what it's not gonna allow is people to...
Three hundred square feet, I'm gonna put a kitchenette, I'm gonna put a bed, and I'm gonna put a bedroom.
Well, Laura made reference to the, you know, this, this new, this new need thing, where they make one of these tiny houses that are made, especially like a gallop, where the, the bedroom is literally a lot above the kitchen.
Well, instead of twenty-five percent, I mean, was that number right from Cohasset, I think, right?
I got it from one of them.
Because I remember reading that, what if we did like thirty percent, I mean, would that, um...
Didn't have a corner, it's what...
Three hundred square feet, to sit there and say, I'm gonna put a new bedroom. And what's a small bedroom?
Ten by ten.
Make it eight by ten.
Ten by fifteen at the most would be, oh, that's a good size, ten by twelve is like a normal, like a kid's bedroom. Hundred and twenty square feet, so maybe two hundred and eighty, which is quite a bit for a ba, bathroom takes another sixty, you got another hundred square feet for a small living room. It's a one-bedroom apartment.
It's definitely not two.
Yeah, like a studio.
Well, it's not even a studio, it's a small bedroom apartment, right? You could fit a ten by ten.
It's a kitchenette.
Yeah.
And a bed?
It's a half-bath, and it's whatever left is the living room.
No, it's gotta be a full bath.
Wait, you don't have a single bedroom, you can have a full bathroom.
You could have a full bath, I mean, you could fit a full bath in six by nine, you got a ten by ten bedroom, and you got a ten by ten living room. Kitchenette, whatever you want, that's a small, that's an apart, I lived in places that small, it's an apartment. It's a one-bedroom apartment versus, you know, a two-bedroom home or a duplex situation.
You feel like twenty by fifteen, it's amazing that you're good in that space.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't mind, I mean, having actually the percentage bump up a little bit, because you think about like, if you've got a two thousand square foot house or whatever, right? You're gonna go automatically to nine hundred. But what we're talking about is what Bill's saying, is you've got...
No, it's still lesser of, so.
That's what I'm saying, I'm sorry, lesser of.
Yeah, you never get to the ballpark.
What?
You never get to the nine hundred.
The nine five is what you could get.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So it doesn't become a factor if you've got a two or three thousand square foot house, right? It's only a factor on these smaller houses.
Exactly.
So therefore, a smaller house like the twelve hundred, or, you know, the thirteen hundred square foot, maybe because of that, we do bump that up a little bit more on the percentage, because, you know, we're trying to have it be, again, subordinate. So, what is subordinate for twelve hundred square feet, what would make it look, I mean, if it was even fifty percent, it would still be...
Well, I think it's more than just subordinate, I mean, I think, I took some of that language out, I mean, I think it's the idea that you wanna have the minimal impact on the neighborhood within reason, so I think you just, you know, that's why I think other towns use that number, twelve hundred, twenty-five percent, is you can fit a one-bedroom apartment in that space. Three hundred square feet is a normal one-bedroom apartment, so I don't see how that creates a hardship on anybody to have that size, and then it also protects the neighborhood.
Yeah, I, I would be okay with one at the thirty, because on the low end, you know, it doesn't add that much square footage, you know?
But you've also got the practicality of, how am I gonna take an existing house and put three hundred square feet on it, in, in...
Yeah, and put the hallways in and stuff like that.
Yeah, I mean, it, it doesn't seem to work, and I'm just saying myself...
On the smaller stuff makes a bigger difference, right?
Yeah.
Than if you have a really, a good-sized house.
But what I'm doing is, I'm taking it and I'm moving it up to, it'll say fifteen hundred square feet.
I, I think one of the towns has thirty-three percent, that's one of the ones that I saw.
Yeah, who was that?
Well, I, I guess...
Me and Marshfield.
Yeah, one town had twenty-five percent, or nine hundred, the other one had thirty-three percent, I think, or seven fifty, so I bumped up the seven fifty to nine hundred, but then I left the twenty-five percent of the lower. Somebody had twenty-five percent, seven fifty, I want twenty-five percent, nine hundred, but there you go, thirty-three percent.
This is still a big change for us, because we're, we're basically starting with seven fifty and going up, right? Right now.
Yeah, I mean, you have a, a ten thousand square foot house, you can build an accessory dwelling that's what? Oh, it's the percentage?
Forty percent is that one?
Forty percent. Four thousand square foot house?
Yeah.
That's detached, it has its own driveway, I mean, that's, that's multifamily's own.
I think also because you're going with a lesser, that's gonna change everything.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't mind bumping it up to like thirty or thirty-three percent, I think that would be fine.
Yeah, I, I was gonna suggest almost a matrix, it's just, it says, here's what you're starting with, and here's what you're gonna get.
That's gonna get confusing.
Yeah, I just put, I just bump up the number, thirty-three percent.
Make it a third. Make it a third.
Thirty-three percent, so it's, so it's a third of nine hundred and thirty, or, then we're a little more liberal than the other towns around us.
I mean, there's still nothing that precludes somebody from pulling a billing permit, expanding their house and coming back and-
But they can still only build nine hundred square foot.
Exactly, but there's nothing that precludes somebody from saying, well, I want, I want a bigger accessory dwelling than, than even thirty-three percent.
But, but the difference, but the difference is like, you know, I'm more concerned about like Sand Hills, you know, if they're pre-existing non-conforming, they're likely not gonna get, or they shouldn't get approval for that. Yes, they're probably not gonna get approval to build double the size of the house or something.
How many have we had in Sand Hills?
Well, you've got the five-third Avenue, um, I mean, this is all-
They have pictures of two or three of them, right, in the same area as well? Yeah.
But I mean, of all the ones that we've done, that's done very-
I think, I think that's actually, I would think that's more likely where you're gonna see them.
People need the, the income, frankly.
They do, they need the income, and they're less likely to be able to move, you know, if you already own a big house on a big lot, you have more flexibility to move somewhere or do something else. So I, I drafted this really thinking about Sand Hills as much as possible, trying to solve that problem.
Well, you know, we're, we're using the hypothetical of the twelve hundred foot square house, then, then your four hundred square foot accessory dwelling or twenty by twenty, which seems to me to be a lot, a lot more workable.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you just give it a little bit extra on-
One, one person I think could be quite comfortable.
I mean, the, the house we just did on Garden, basically, they would be looking at three hundred and thirty square feet.
Yeah, about half, half the size of what they, what they have.
Right.
Well, actually, it wouldn't even have been approved, because that house was less than twelve hundred.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be in front of the, yeah.
The one I wanted to mention, through right now, section is that O below there, we have it in our affordable accessory dwelling by law right now, we have no more than fifteen can be issued per year, but in, but funny, in our not affordable, there's no restriction on how many a year. Do we wanna have a restriction on how many a year or not?
I don't think so.
I think the intent-
I think the affordable was trying not to get too much affordable access, right? I think that was the intent there.
I mean, I mean, I think the intent of it too is just, you know, as we've seen as these applications come in, we see issues with the bylaw. So it kinda, it's like a stopgap to prevent you from being overrun before you can have a chance to fix the problem, so. I'm thinking maybe some kind of limitation, but it doesn't have to be super tight, what it is, you know? It gives you a chance to go back to town meeting and make little fixes like we're doing.
It used to be, before that comprehensive reselling, it was twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
We never ever hit the twenty-five.
I doubt we probably ever will, but it seems like they should have something in there just in case.
We've never even hit ten, I mean, at least the-
Oh, yeah, no, I, I think you've come close to ten.
On a rolling, on a rolling close.
Well, I'm not sure even like this calendar year.
Eight, they should, eight, eight.
Well, if you wanna have something, you could put fifteen, but I don't think it's gonna be that.
I don't think it'll ever come up, but it's, you know.
It's a hundred.
Can we make it waivable, if we, if we chose to?
I, I just wouldn't even-
I think either have it or you don't, but-
Then I don't think we should have.
You know, I'd like to have something in there, just if, if for some reason we're missing something, you know, you always miss something when you draft these bylaws. There's some unintended consequence, and all of a sudden, somebody finds the loophole in it, and needs to get it built all over town. If you have a maximum, it gives you a chance to go back and fix it at town meeting, so. I mean, if we hit a number like twenty, that's gonna be like a record.
I don't mind fifteen or twenty, whatever, I mean, that, that just seems like we haven't really been there, so.
I'd even say even twenty-five would be, you know, just something out there.
If I can't have none, I'll have twenty-five.
I mean, it's probably never gonna come up. It's a stopgap. On the application procedure, let's see.
You saw the form that, that we have, that we're using now about people swearing on, I, I believe we have the pains and penalties of property now? Yeah, so we, we do, we, we're on this track now, and it would be good to have it in the zoning bylaws, if that's what we're doing.
And this, this section five thirty point three combines with the next section on the next page. So this first one's just the application, so they give us an affidavit, kind of similar to what we have right now, that they're the current field or the property, they currently will or upon completion will occupy either the primary or the accessory dwelling. Bob asked, we asked that, for a yearly update, it's on the next page, what he's asking about. So then on the next page, we've got two things going on there, one, and this came right out of, I think I read it out of Marshfield's. Two things going on there, one is if they sell the house, there's a change of title, then the permit expires and they have to come back to us and basically provide all the same information affidavits and get the permit re-certified. And then I did provide in there-
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Like a refinance, is that considered to be a change of title?
No. And in fact, I carted that out. So the lease is different, that's connection with financing transaction.
Okay, thank you.
And then I did add my own custom provision there that said, you know, if someone has a proposed transaction in the second half of A there, they can come to us ahead of time, we can issue them the permit that's conditional upon the sale going through. That way we don't have a chilling effect of any transaction like that, and then-
And we should make this an exception to the twenty-five limitation procedure as well. No, I mean, just, just-
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good, yeah, I agree. Yeah, that won't apply to just change of ownership.
Yeah, well, the twenty-five, you're already saying that's a new one.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah, okay.
Well-
This is pretty complicated.
So, and then under B there, that's, uh, most towns require annual certification, or the special permit lapses. Now, whether people actually do that or not, if they didn't do it technically, their special permit would lapse, and they could probably come to us anyway, and we could issue a new one.
But why, why go to the billiards inspector?
Uh, because they, I think you have to, I don't know that we can function in that capacity, don't we? Typically it's the billiard, cause they pull the CO.
It's a zoning issue.
Well, no, it's a, it's sort of a CO issue.
He's, he's gonna want us to do it.
Is it?
Yeah, yeah. Let's try the planning board and see what, you know, town council or-
Okay, I, I don't care, I did, other than that, the inspector, if, if you think we can do it.
I think we can do it.
I think we, we almost have to do it.
Because basically we come back and sit there and say, it's an enforcement issue, then you give it to Neil.
Okay. Okay.
But Neil's not gonna do it as a billiards inspector.
Okay.
Nor should he.
So this, this requires them to take action.
Yes.
And it, and it will sort of lose their certification if they fail to do so?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have a list, we'll have phone number, whatever, and we'll just be sending out certified mail and telling people they have to get in and do this.
So you're gonna send out a reminder then?
No.
I think we're gonna, well, I would lay on it.
I think what'll happen is a lot of people lapse, but as a practical matter, then they could just come before us and say, hey, mine lapsed, can I get a new one? And we'd say, okay.
And then we've gotta advertise, I mean, they're gonna have to pay an application.
Oh, yeah, totally.
Just, do you know a ballpark figure, how many accessory dwellings we have in Citrus?
Um, Karen did a nice list, and there are, do you remember how many? Fifty-something?
Fifty, sixty, yeah.
So it's, it's reasonable, it's not like- The, the other way to go, which I didn't see in other towns, doing it this way, the other way to go would be upon the planning board's request. So they don't have to, you know, we could decide as a planning board, how often we wanna request it.
Yeah.
Yeah, like if a neighbor said, hey, they haven't lived in the house for two years, then we could request it, that might be a better, easier way to handle it. I haven't seen anyone else do it that way, but we don't have this provision.
I just wonder if losing this ends up affecting somebody's fighting, you know, all that stuff.
Yeah, you're probably right. I don't mind doing it that way, just putting it that upon a request, no more frequently than annually or something, they'll provide this. I mean, the problem is, I don't know if you get into strange issues about enforcement, uneven enforcement and things like that. That's why, that's probably why people do this.
Is easy, and other towns are doing it once a year, and I don't think, you know, it won't apply to the existing ones that we already have, it will just be new ones going forward, so there won't be too many of them for a good number of years.
What does a yearly certification look like? Is it just a letter, just the same affidavit?
That we live here.
So will you, will you actually send them a form, say?
I think we'll send a form, maybe we'll send them, sell the address down below, just send it back.
It'll look like the same form they submit with the apply, it's the same thing, just recertifying they still live there.
It's the same trust me.
Yeah, exactly, it is.
It's exactly.
It is, but, but if it's proven to be false, it's, you know, pains and penalty perjury, I suppose you could revoke the permit.
You call, call the D A and have it recharged.
Criminal disposition stuff, I mean, we, we would have to go through Neil to do that, I think, but, you know, that's another thing too.
It, it's better than nothing, which is what we have now, I think, so. So those are Bob's comments, but we skipped over all the other stuff, so we should go through the rest of it and see if there's anything else you guys are-
Well, I, I did have one clarifying question, and that was about the business district. And the reason, the clarifying question is, I know that there are some structures, like I'm thinking down at the Harbor area.
We granted one, right?
We granted a couple.
Oh, the cable.
Again, the one above the cable building, the one that kind of faces no war.
But I'm just saying that, what I understand is you're saying you don't want to allow them in the business.
No, they're allowed under the village and exuse overlay district. There's already special-
Should they have been replaced with something else?
No, no, it's already in existence now, they can-
They get the same thing in a different bylaw.
That's really for new ones, for new construction, and it also has a lot of design criteria, where you have to have a certain pitch to the roof, I mean, that's really, that's really aimed at new construction, I think, and, and this was aimed, cause I was kind of involved with it at the time, um, this is aimed at reuse of existing buildings.
I mean, I think my concerns-
It's kind of low impact thing, I mean, that's what it was designed to be.
Well, you know the, the Bailey's Liquor Store?
Yeah.
There's a house next to it, right? That, that's a single family house, that's in this weird location, that everywhere around it is like business. So let's just say theoretically, they wanted to do an accessory dwelling in their house. Would they be disallowed, I'm just asking, would they be disallowed under your regulation?
I see.
Oh, yeah, they've gotta be, right now.
Yeah, there's actually two houses back there.
That's a bad example.
Yeah, I mean, this is meant to go to houses, but-
I think the idea was to get more residents in the business districts, so you have people to shop and people to create some kind of a vibrant atmosphere.
I'm not against that, it's just that-
Was doing it at a very small scale.
Yeah, I'm not against that, it's just the difference was the regulations in here were, you know, it was unrestricted as the size, it was, you could have three units, it was really no like regulators on it. It was just sort of do whatever you wanted.
Throw that together a little bit, and the times then were a little more fairly easy than, than I had it, but-
I mean, if we were gonna do that, I think we need to draft sort of like a new separate section about that with some real restrictions. This is more just like, you know, here's all the restrictions we find residential, oh, by the way, you can do it business, and it's unrestricted as the size, you can do whatever you want, kind of thing. That's what bothered me, whereas the village overlay is really thought out about design and scale and things like that, so. Maybe we could look at adding a new section for the business district, so maybe have some more of the regulations on it, don't you think?
Yeah, it was really just a way to get some kind, any kind of rental in your villages. So that's why there wasn't a restriction as to size, and when we did the ones over flowers and festivities in the building that they're in right now, they're, I think they're four apartments up there. And the owner of the building, Spiros Morales, um, actually, one of those is his own personal unit, and he does have another residence, but-
I'm not against it, I'm, I'm for it, I'm just saying the way we get there, this isn't enough.
Are they?
They're something, though they are accessible.
That's how most were approved, because otherwise you have to have ten thousand square feet of, of land in the business zone to create any kind of residential unit. So to get around that ten thousand square feet, that's why we did the accessory.
Well, the other thing too is the way this was drafted, the way I read it, is if you have a business use on a structure, you can do this, so it didn't restrict it just to business districts, the way I read it, the way it was drafted legally. So I was worried about that as well.
Yeah, yeah.
So there just seemed like all kinds of ways to use it, so I think, I'm not against the idea of it, but it's not really flushed out in what, flushed out what we have in here.
I do see business districts in this criteria, in this, you know, special permit procedures and conditions. I, I mean, I think it was aimed at business districts.
Yeah.
So, anyway, but I have a problem with doing that as a whole separate piece of zoning, um, and making this be strictly for residential, because I think it's good to really focus on what you want to focus on, and it's a really different kind of situation.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we take the, we're deleting the affordable accessory, maybe we make that section, you know, accessory dwellings in business districts, and you kind of have some similar stuff in there, but.
Or we could just do that later, something.
I guess I just was bringing that up, because as Laura said, the example, I would hate to exclude that example of all flowers and festivities. I mean, that seems, I totally agree with trying to have some accessory, or having some rental units, some dwellings in the village districts.
I'm completely for that.
Okay.
It's just, it's just, this is not the way to do it.
I totally understand.
This is the only mechanism right now.
It's unfortunate, but it's completely, you know, unrestricted, so.
I didn't want this to be put into place, and all of a sudden we can't do something like that.
But maybe we should leave the mechanism. If we're not gonna do it right away, maybe we should leave the mechanism and come back and do, you know, take it out of it.
I think we can draft a section and add one now, I think that's what we should do, I think we should-
As long as you-
Do it right now?
Yeah, I think, it doesn't have to be-
See, that's what I heard from Laura.
Anything we do now is gonna be better than what we have, you know what I mean, like, right now it's completely unrestricted, so it's-
I'll let you work with me on that.
I, I would rather do it later, but I'm saying if the alternative is not to strike it or do something now, do something now, but you gotta strike whatsoever.
Yeah, I think either do it now, either do it now or don't strike.
I'll, I'll grant you that, yeah.
Yeah, it's, and I was hoping we could kind of leave it in the way generally, because that's, that's more of a mixed use bylaw, you know, that's where you put things like that. And it shouldn't apply just to new construction, it should apply to existing as well. So maybe there's a change, we can talk about it or look at it, but-
But I think we either, we should leave it, either leave it or strike it, is it strike it and fix it or leave it?
Okay, all right, we'll look at that. On the next page-
That's from business, yeah.
I put a restriction in there that most have, that you can have more than two bedrooms in an accessory. Does anybody have a concern about that?
No, I think that's, two bedrooms to the maximum, I think that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
Can I ask, speaking of that, so you do have two bedrooms, then there was another provision that you had, that you had to have exact, you had to have two parking spaces.
No, it says no more than-
It says one-
At least, at least one per, one per bedroom.
So that means if I have a two bedroom, I'm like, why do I need two parking spaces? That didn't look like me. It says, and you're required to have two parking spaces.
Cause you're likely to have two parking spaces.
Well, cause you could rent it out to-
Cause you could rent it out to two more people, you could have two separate houses. It's, it's meant to prevent congestion on the street, people parking on the street and things like that, it's similar to what we have in resident, for regular residential, you have to have so many off-street usually and-
What you can do with that is to just make them show that they can be constructed and that they don't necessarily have to construct them, I mean, we've, I know we've done that before, but, um-
I don't know, I really, I mean, I think it's important, because, I mean, this is to prevent the character of the neighborhood, you don't wanna add all these additional cars on the street in these compact neighborhoods, so. I mean, if you can provide two spaces on your lot, you shouldn't be building an accessory dwelling.
Well, we're gonna drive and that, we're single crew, right?
Yeah, yeah, we are.
So we're gonna, they're gonna be parking the street.
Well, again, I, I, well-
I use the same reasoning, but if you're okay with it, I'm okay with it.
I was trying to advocate toward, you know, more walkable, sustainable, non-car centric uses, that's why I was a little bit concerned about two cars per unit, that's what I was thinking.
It's a good for disabled people, I think there's a fair number that we've had.
I'm just saying when you required it, like, again, let's say it's in the village.
At the outset, then you never know what's gonna happen after they are gone.
Right.
Well, anyway, I'm more concerned about preserving the quality of the neighborhood than I am about, you know, somebody having hardship of adding in a space for one more spot on their lot. If you don't have that kind of space on your lot, you probably shouldn't be building an accessory dwelling, if you can't put a, put a really ten by fifteen additional space on your lot, that's if the lot's too constricted already.
You know, I, I think Bob is gonna really wanna have that parking, because I think he had some concerns about, um, traffic congestion with these small-
We get addressed if anyone, I finished with it, and then we'll get addressed.
All right, that was just something I- Bob's, Bob's on the subcommittee where he owns it.
I just didn't wanna be advocating cars and negativity, that's all.
Yeah, we talked about most of the rest of that page, I think.
I think we got the-
I think, I think you've actually made a lot of progress on this today.
So, yeah, this is really, really good.
One thing I just wanna mention is, um, I will pass out the list that Karen put together, because it's just a really nice list, it's really interesting. But a lot of these special permits were never recorded, and I think that to make sure that happens, we're probably gonna have to ask these, these property owners for a seventy-five dollar check, and then we go and record it at the registry and just make sure that they're on the title. So, anyway, it's just an administrative thing.
So we have to have this language pretty much done by next meeting, is that correct?
Yeah, we'll have a subcommittee, you wanna be on it?
There's not a letter of revisions, I mean, I'll revise all the stuff, recirculate again, everybody can put their comments into Oregon, but, I mean, I think we're pretty close.
Pretty close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you send that in, kind of, another version, okay, that we have any other questions, comments?
Yeah, and then we can-
Add to it.
I mean, tonight we only had about five or six things that were kind of hot buttons, so I imagine the next time we might only have a couple.
Yeah, you did a good job, Ken.
Yeah.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? Before we do stone more, can we take care of the Form A and the lot releases? That way we can look all night longer at them.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, just here, just sort of background information that is asked to have.
It's also on the website too.
Yeah.
That list, in slightly different format.
Yeah, I think we didn't advertise who hasn't reported their special permit, which is for realtors and people that are always calling and have these things.
You've been quiet, quietly waiting.
Okay, can we do the Form A for First Parish Road? What are you doing, Paul?
We submitted a Form A, it's a fifty-foot lot, it's under the authority of Zoning Board of Appeals, and it's, um, the decision has been recorded with, um, town clerk, there's no opposition to it. This is from property on First Parish Road, it's something we called, it's owned by Martha Nugent, it's a legal lot to the right side of the existing dwelling.
This is just the other side of the comments, all right, that, um, you all talked about the, um-
Yeah, this is the common driveway that we're building here now.
Yeah.
I think Chris McCowen was it, or something?
I was gonna say, I thought this was listed.
This is her existing dwelling, she's got a four acres lot, she's got one.
This is the one, he said that they got a fifty-foot frontage.
All right.
It's a little bit not, not too local, it's not too local, is it, does she have?
You haven't gone around for it.
Not for it.
We have two, like, good perks, right, I think, good perks here, but it's sort of much better over here.
Yeah, I looked at it, I don't have a problem at all, you got any comments, Paul?
No, got the frontage, um, the special permit's been approved, so it's got approved on the town.
Do you need a motion?
All right. I move to endorse a dispute under the subdivision control, law not required, a plan of land in the town of Citrus, Massachusetts, located at five sixty-eight First Parish Road, prepared by Ross Engineering Company Incorporated, for applicant Martha Nugent, trustee dated September twenty-sixth, twenty twelve. As the division of the tract of land shown on the plan is not a subdivision, because every lot shown on the plan has frontage on First Parish Road, a public way of the distance as required under the Citrus zoning by law, and Lot One has received a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals for a fifty-foot frontage lot.
For a second?
Second.
I'll look in favor.
Aye.
Thanks for waiting.
You need that win, you don't need it today, do you? You need that sign tomorrow? Monday work for you?
Yeah, on Monday, you go for Monday?
No, no, one other one's, after tomorrow.
Wednesday?
Well, they gave us Christmas Eve.
The next one, yeah, I do think your present is Tuesday.
It is Tuesday.
It is Tuesday, we haven't changed it.
So, so pick the plan up Wednesday, is that what you're saying?
Does that work for you? Box and A. Okay.
Thursday, yeah, that's fine. I'll, I'll pick it up Wednesday morning, if I have it.
No, I'll come in and sign it on Wednesday.
Okay, and then do you want us to call you after Bill's coming in, do you want us to call you when, when it's been signed?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, I'd sign it, but I'm gonna, I'm locked up tomorrow morning, and I, I won't guarantee that I get done before twelve.
That's okay. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Ken, thanks for waiting.
Thanks. Okay, next item is request for lot releases for lots two, three and four, Dreamwall. John, tell us what you wanna do.
I'm looking for, just exactly, lot releases for two, three and four, Dreamwall, which is Kobe's Run. There was a, a meeting that I did not know of, with the review engineer on site, I really don't know why, I wasn't notified, but I was not, and, uh, it was to, to actually set the jury, which I thought was a pretty important meeting that I would be at, but I was not notified, he created a punch list of items, which I disagree with quite a few of them, because they were done, I would have shown him the review engineer that they were done at the time of the inspection. Some have been done since as well, so the numbers, the numbers vary, I think, considerably than what is on the, uh,
Is recommended?
The recommendations, and I'd like to just go through them quickly.
Is that something we're gonna see?
Well, we, we didn't, I, I don't know what meeting John is really referring to, because everything was just done by email, there was not, there was a final inspection.
I was notified at every meeting, I was present at every, every inspection, but I was not notified by anybody.
There wasn't any intention to exclude you, yeah, certainly, there wasn't any intention to exclude.
Well, I just, I don't understand why we took- Well, I just, I don't understand why we took place without me being notified, that's all, I gotta make that comment, because I was not notified.
I mean, it seems like...
But I guess at this point, how do we need to get it, I mean, what's...
Yeah, I think, I think if you have, you have something to, to counter what they came up with...
I do, I do, and it all makes...
Maybe you should give the consulting engineer a chance to look at it, I mean, I think maybe that's where I'm hearing.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how we can decide anything tonight if they're in disagreement, you should have a chance to meet with them and, like you said, point out...
Right, well, it's, it's, it's pretty, pretty basic stuff, if I can just kinda give my...
Why don't you tell us?
Take on it, and...
Because we still need our consultant to confirm that, and those recommendations.
Yeah.
I, I also have issues with the, the consulting and the way that the bill has been handled, and, you know, I don't, Lori, do.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not denying, I'm not, I understand that, and then I also understand that you did have a discussion with them about that, directly face-to-face with them in the field, not with Jerry.
I did, I did, but my feelings, after reviewing the bills, I, I haven't been able to review the bills prior to the bills being paid, which I think is incorrect. I think before a bill gets paid, certainly the person paying the bill should be able to review it, I think that's just fair, and, you know, I wanted to speak with the review engineer, and I was told that I cannot call him and harass him, and those were words right from your mouth, that I would harass.
I think we're kind of getting a little bit off the top.
Okay, all right, yeah, let's, let's move on, I'm sorry.
Let's look at the difference in terms of what the requirements are for...
Absol- absolutely.
Let's look at that first.
First one is, is two coats of pavement, which, the very beginning of this project, I went and spoke to Kevin at DPW, and showed him conflicting cross-sections on the roadway, and I asked him what I should do, and his comment, and I asked him, would be a two-inch base and inch and a half, that would be sufficient, as Norde Farm was, that's what Norde Farm Road is, and he said, that's fine, he said, in my opinion, we're not gonna be maintaining the road anyways, and it's a three, three-lot driver, as you all know. I just wanna show you the conflicting cross-sections here, and that's why I asked, because as we all know, getting a job is very important. The conflicting cross-sections, here's the typical cross-section here, okay, and here's another cross-section. This cross-section shows two inch and, and two and an inch and a half. This cross-section shows two inches of binder and two inches of top course. As I said, Norde Farm Road is two inches and an inch and a half, he said that would be sufficient. Now, I don't have a problem because it's two and two, that, that would be what I should be held to, I think.
What's the other thing?
Also, also, I'd like to note...
One says two inches, then one and a half, then the other says two and two.
I'd like to note on...
What's there?
Dream, Dreamwall Road.
Two and, two and one and a half, right.
But you have two...
Yeah, but you know, I don't mind doing the two and two, because that's what it says.
Okay.
You know, I mean, Kevin said two and an inch and a half would be fine. I also wanna show...
So what did the VP say?
Well, they're sticking to the, the plan here, they're showing this as in their quote.
When John's all done with his, you know, his point of view on this, I mean, I have some other information I'd like to pull.
I'd also like to show that Dreamwall Road is two inches, here. It says report right here. Right here, I had them take a picture of this, and he put in the report, Dreamwall Road is one coat, two inches. That's the road that ties into this. So I just wanted to note that. So therefore, on the quote, it would be one course, yeah, the, the two inches, he's got two inches and then two, 7,400 and 8,200. Now, to be upfront, perfectly honest, okay, which I consider myself to be, I have a quote of the two-inch cost, which I think, Laura, I gave you, and I have it somewhere in here as well, and the quote from my paving company was $11,000, I think you should have a quote copy of that as well, Laura. So, I'm not, I'm not trying to...
So the 11 is for the two inches or for four inches?
Two inches.
Okay.
Two inches, so I have the two and the two at the four, Kevin said the three and a half would be suitable.
Yeah.
But if I went with a quote that I got from my paving company, I'm not, I'm not trying to, he's got 7,400 and 8,200, one of them would be the lead at the 7,400, the 8,200 doesn't count it, it's actually gonna be 11, so I'm just trying to be fair and honest to the, to the surety.
What are the two line items, I'm, I'm confused here on what they're saying you need to do versus what you're saying you need to do.
Well, they're saying that, that the finished course would be an inch and a half.
Yeah.
And the pay, the binder course, which would be actually three courses, would be 8,200, but it's actually $11,000, not even...
How's the binder course, three courses?
Well, because I've already got one course down, I have a two-inch binder course down now.
Yep.
Top coat usually is an inch and a half.
Right.
This cross-section shows two and two, but then there's another conflicting cross-section that shows an actual three courses, which I've, I've been building roads on my life and never put three courses of asphalt down. This is a class B road, it's a common driveway, is what it is.
So on this issue, how far apart are we on the money, the recommendation between...
Well, I, I, well, we got, we got a recommendation, we got a estimate from Plymouth County Paving that John gave us for, for about $12,000.
$11,007.
So that'll get you to the two and two then?
Eight seventy-five.
Excuse me?
That'll get you to the two and two.
Two inches, correct.
I just wanna, I just wanna say before you all conclude anything about this two and two, everything all through this, I've been going back to DPW to just make sure that we're on the same page, because there's nothing in writing about what they told you, that they told you the two coats is okay, I mean, I'm not saying that...
Very first thing I did, Laura.
Just let me finish, just for a sec.
Sure, sure.
So I did go back to Kevin Cafferty, and I asked him, I said, did you ever tell, tell John that two coats is okay, because that's what John is telling us, and I just wanna get, you know, get the record straight.
Mm-hmm.
And he said, he said no, he said, he's not gonna waive anything in the subdivision regulations, that's what he said, but I, I'm not saying like, he said what, all I'm saying is, I think that for the board, they need to get something in writing, and if he did say that to you at some point, that's great, but you need to get something in writing from him so that we all really are absolutely clear.
Okay, but I do have a signed plan that shows two and two, Laura.
But, but you just said there's a conflict on that plan, where one detail shows one detail and the other detail shows something else.
And usually, if, if you really wanna get technical, when there is a conflict, the conflict goes to the benefit.
Well, that may be some legal issue that maybe the lawyers on the board would know, but I just also wanna say...
Two and two.
That's something that wasn't really...
There's three here.
It wasn't particularly waived by the board, so I'm just...
But it's, again, you gotta really look at the big picture, it's a three-lot.
It's up to the board, whatever way they wanna go.
It's a three-lot driving.
Five inches total, right?
No, it's actually, there's three and a half, it's two and one and a half, it's, it's two layers.
Two, two ones and a half, so it's actually, it's five inches altogether there, that's, that's the conflict.
Right, exactly.
You're showing a two and two here.
Correct, and, and this road here is two inches, that's it, single two inch.
Well, there are a lot of places around there.
So your engineer, your, your road is compared to the, the main road. Correct, correct.
But this is the, this is the requirement, though?
What's the subdivision?
In a, in a Class A road, that's the requirement on a Class A road.
Yeah, and the planning board didn't waive it when, you know, this came through with the subdivision, it wasn't, we always know what was said.
That should have really been picked up by the review engineer, the original review he's...
Fortunately, there's two details, but, but you would have to have a specific waiver in the decision for it to be waived.
What to waive?
The subdivision requirement.
So, yeah, this... If it's not waived in the decision, it's not waived.
Just so I understand, this is the appropriate, that's not the right word. What's in subdivision... Exactly, this is what's in the subdivision regulations.
And this details less than what's in the subdivision, right, and this is what you was building, right, or you wanna build two.
Well, that's what I'd like to hold.
And so, so the consultant's saying, you know, he sees this, it's supposed to be this, therefore we should hold back some of the money.
Well, the consultant actually, I mean, everything I think has been very, very fair, and I think, I, I just wanna make sure that the board knows that, the consultant said, check with Kevin Cafferty, so, so we did, I did, and, and Kevin said, no, he hadn't, he hadn't said that, that two coats was okay, that it should be three coats.
How, how much money is being pulled back right now, totally, right now?
Nothing, because the lots haven't been released...
This is an additional requirement?
This is instead of the covenant, you know, three lots...
Oh, to, to reduce the lot.
You released the lot that had the Hogan House on it without getting any surety, and I think the idea was that when these three lots were released...
They gotta get the surety, yeah.
This is to set the surety amount.
Yeah.
Correct, correct.
So we're between like, about 12 and about like 32 is about where we are.
What are, what are the other issues?
You know what, some of these have been done, let's see, you know, the Cape Cod burn was actually included in the $11,850 price from my company, the street sign, the street sign has been installed, set street monuments, that's one thing I'd like to discuss with the board, they don't make sense in the cul-de-sac area, they're gonna be confusing to the homeowners, and they, I, I spoke with my, my surveyor, and he, because the street was designed in a cul-de-sac layout, but then that was waived, and it was built as a common driveway, and I'm sure it is, it, it just doesn't, doesn't make sense.
So this is setting the monuments where the lots meet the street, is that what you're talking about, the corners where the corners meet the street?
Quite appropriate.
Yeah, we have another, one of those square...
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't wanna have that good one.
This here, there's, there's, in the covenant, there's, it's a requirement that all lot corners have rerides, that's been done, with caps, but on the reriding. Then they're asking for square monuments to be placed here, and here, 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 and then around this, well, these monuments in here make no sense, because it's actually been waived to... Common driveway shape, comes in, see the driveway here, and then it forks out, and forks out.
So you're not actually building this, right?
This doesn't get built, so these monuments out here are gonna be...
Didn't we say something about that?
There was a waiver, John, of setting the concrete bounds of the lot corners, and it did say, I mean, the board, this was what was requested by your engineer way back at the beginning?
Yeah, my bonded engineer, what they weren't my engineer, that was prior to, I bonded already curves.
Okay, well, anyway, it said that the bounds were set along the right-of-way, and the points of curve and tangency, and that you would have a rebar at the lot corners.
Correct, and all the rebars and caps are on all the lot corners, which are really the important thing, this, just these, these, these bounds here, we'll go back to this, this is street layout, the, the driveway is way inside of all of these bounds, as in Norde Farm Road, you see them about two feet off the edge of the road, but these ones, that's all I'm asking for, is these, there's one, two, three, four, five, six of them.
Yeah, that seems fine.
It doesn't, it...
I didn't know what you mean, this...
Yeah, they're completely wasted, no, absolutely, I can see these ones here, and that's it, these first six bounds, and then it's straight from there. This bound is already set, it's already existed.
Are you gonna set, are you gonna set these when it turns, though?
Well, no, see, it's a, see, it's a common driveway, it's just inside the layout, see if you follow the road here, this is actually the edge of the road, this 35-foot radius.
Oh, I see.
See ya?
Yeah.
And then it goes out, very similar to Norde Farm Road, and this.
It seems like if you got something out to about here, if you set bounds on the inch there...
If you need the last, the last step here.
And then last step, right, I, I don't have a problem.
Because you brought it up here, it needs to, needs to actually nothing, because they don't exist.
Right.
You know what they do do is, a lot of times, people, especially with something like this where you've gotta turn around, I mean, I'm not, I'm not arguing that it's right or wrong, I'm just saying, they, they show people where their lots are, I mean, a lot of the times, people will start planting stuff out in here, and, you know, you've got this turnaround, that's the one, the one thing that they really do do with it.
But, but it's, it's, the, the road's out in here, Laura, it's out, it's out here.
All the more reason is, is what I'm saying, because people, people just don't know where they're, yeah, they'll, they'll put stuff out there that they don't...
So, what, just wanna see what I'm hearing is that, you know, I, I buy this lot for, and the road is right here, and I plant a tree right here, because I think it's not...
You, you wouldn't know that it's not...
Yeah, but, but, but it, it, it actually is, you know, you'd plant a tree where the asphalt is, you're not gonna plant it out in the asphalt.
But the asphalt doesn't match with the cul-de-sac, I mean, and especially with something like this where you have a three-point term.
There's no cul-de-sac.
The cul-de-sac exists as a property.
Right.
I have no problem putting your rerides in there, but, but the monuments in there make no sense, if I drive a reride with a cap, that metal detector would probably work.
That seems fine to me, that makes more sense.
Yeah, something, just something, so that, when they're all arguing with each other about, you know, what, that's why...
I put the monuments up to this point, and I just put rerides in, call it good, that's more than enough, to me.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's reasonable, but I mean, I think somewhere, well, in your road, you're gonna need to...
But, but we'll continue on, $51,000 you held there, I have, I have something from my concrete company where I buy the bounds, they're $21, hours' labor, it's installed. He's got 316, 318.75 per bound, so I think that that's quite high.
And you're buying a promise?
$21, $21.
Well, I, I...
I'll show you.
Most of the labor.
They, they do typically put in...
I wanna come work for you, I get that much in labor per hour.
They typically, typically, the consulting engineer is with the labor part, I don't know about the pound, but about with the labor part, it's gonna be higher because we have to use prevailing.
Right.
Prevailing wage, I understand that, I understand that, but certainly, you know, not, not 3%. It's somewhere in there. God, you've got so much data, Mark, you're crazy. Here, this right here, mine, this is...
Now I wanna buy this lot and plant a tree here.
You'll be watching.
I have them priced all, I have them priced all 16 pounds, and I think it came off...
I think we've never even seen that, we, we, we never, we never got that to give the consulting engineers, so we...
No, well, I, I got the number from a consulting engineer, and then it was like, whoa, this is crazy, and I just wanted to show that I pay $21 a piece for, you know, and, and it takes an hour to dig the hole and set it, it's, well, anyways.
So what do you, what do you think the fair price is for that?
I'd like to compromise with the whole thing, and make it an easy process, between the paving and everything else, I came up to a price of like $13,000, now I understand there's prevailing wage, and I understand that there was a 10% that he had in there as well, but it's what I'm suggesting, is that I'll, I'll place a $20,000 bond, which But it's what I'm suggesting is that I'll, I'll place a twenty thousand dollar bond, which is more than enough to do what I have to do, and it pertains to the finished coat of asphalt. There were...
You know, the asphalt's where the real difference is.
Excuse me?
The asphalt's where the real difference is.
So, the asphalt's really, ninety-nine percent is the asphalt, and I would like to ask the board if, it's called a driveway permit bond, and it associates it to the asphalt, and I could have that, I need a stationary situat letter that would state that I would need a twenty thousand dollar driveway permit bond on stationary situat.
We've never done anything like that before, but we, I did talk to the town treasurer, because when we talked, what you told me was that you would have no problem giving us a check. That's what you told me. So, I went and talked to her about what forms of surety she would accept, and check is fine.
Driveway permit bond is just a...
I, I don't know that she would accept that.
Twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollar bond.
It's like a performance bond, I mean...
Yeah, it's, it's called a driveway permit bond, a driving insurance company. And it's what it does, is, I'll be perfectly honest with you, a driveway, driveway permit bond is tied to the asphalt.
What do you mean tied to the asphalt, like, does the bond company own the asphalt until, you know, what?
No, no, it states, it states that there is a twenty thousand dollar bond, that there's twenty thousand dollars available to, pertain to the finished coat of the asphalt.